Good evening, Wakefield. Welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, November 13, 2023. I call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Ask my colleagues to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three for attendance. Joined by all of my colleagues so far except for Councillor Dannyhee, who I know is on her way and expects to be here soon. Moving on to item number four, which is a possible executive session to discuss contracts because an open session may have detrimental effects on the bargaining position of the town. We do have the intent of returning to open session immediately thereafter. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
Move to executive session.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Councillor Vincent?
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Chair McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Butt?
Yes.
Councillor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. So we will move to executive session and return to open session once we are finished. open session.
Thank you and good evening again. Town Council is back from executive session into open session. I'm going to take the agenda out of order, just given that we have two hearings scheduled at seven. And so we will be moving ahead just to item eight for now and then going back a little bit later. So, Mr. Mayo, item number eight, bonds, if you wouldn't mind taking this one.
Yes, my favorite subject, bonds, as the council knows. The council may recall that the town of Wakefield worked with the MWRA for some financial assistance in removing inflow and infiltration from our sewer lines. And why that is important is because when groundwater and other water comes in, it goes out, it is measured at the end of the line, and then we are billed on our sewer bills. So it's very important to make sure that other water doesn't come in. The great issue on these bonds is that it is three quarters of a grant, and then it is another quarter of, or, excuse me, two-thirds of a grant and another third of interest-free loans. So what we have in front of us this evening is, I'm asking the council to vote to approve $327,500 worth of bonds at an interest rate of zero, and I'm kind of jealous, this is what I'm shooting for on the high school project, but this is pretty good. If there aren't any further questions, Mr. Chairman, with your approval, I will read the motion.
Any questions from the council? We won't hold you to that zero percent for our high school bonding.
It asks that, what, point one? You'll be able to point one?
Maybe a little higher, exactly. All right, if you wouldn't mind going ahead to read the motion, Mr. Mayo.
We would like the council to vote that the sale of $327,500 worth of sewer bond the town of Wakefield dated December 4th, 2023 to the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the authority is hereby approved, and the town treasurer or the appropriate town official is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable without interest on November 15th of the years and in the principal amount as follows, 2024 through 2033, $32,750 each year. Further voted that each member of the town council, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? No, seeing none. Steve, we don't need a roll call vote for this?
No, you do not.
All right. Seeing none, motion is to approve the issuance of the bonds as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it seven-zero. Thank you, Steve. Moving on to item number nine, appointments. Nine A is the Economic Development Council. Do we have a motion?
I would move that we appoint for three-year terms Chris Barrett, Allison Houghton, and Joanne Orsino. For two-year terms, Rocco Camerata, Ali Chukri, and Kimberly Mizerv. And for one-year terms, Anne Hadley, Nista Ramakrishnan, Ramakrishnan, and Will Stone.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
I'll just say that I think that when we had created this, we had hoped for a little bit more of diversity of backgrounds and disciplines, and so I hope that over time we'll be, once we get this up and running, we'll be able to see that. Because I don't, while I appreciate all of the applicants and their qualities, I think there is a decent amount of overlap in several of the candidates, but we have 10 applicants, nine of whom provide resumes, and so I think that's the lot that we're working off of right now. But I think just going forward, if we can all be mindful of ways in which we can kind of slot in folks that we come across, because we have these staggering terms. It'd be helpful.
Certainly not anything negative about the people who applied.
Oh, no, not at all.
From what I'm going to say, which is, I was kind of surprised by the overlap and was a bit more hopeful that we would have more small business people perhaps as part of the mix. So maybe that's something we can, you know, talk up out there in the community as we go.
And I would certainly put out there that, you know, we do have three spots that will open up in a year, so that is shockingly just around the corner.
I think, too, we can always consider, you know, just members at large, non-voting members, things, you know, folks of that nature who might be interested in becoming involved. We've done that historically in other committees, commissions, and boards, so maybe that's something else to think about. But I think of a dynamic group here, certainly a lot of talent that's come before us, but I think a little bit more diversification of background going forward will just strengthen this council.
Thank you, council. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Yeah, I'd just like to make sure that the Economic Development Council document that we're working under is dated, so that we know what date it was approved, especially if it's going to be put up on the town website. I know it predates me being on the town council.
I was, yeah, I was going to say it was either late 2020, early 2021, but Ms. Dalton, maybe if we could look that up in the minutes and make sure that that's dated. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Ms. Lee as presented by Vice Chair McLean? Opposed? Eyes have it seven-zero. The Charter for the Economic Development Council also does call for one or two town council representatives, and so I would like to appoint Counselor Dombrowski and Counselor Butt as the town council liaisons to the Economic Development Council. There are a lot of councils going on, but appreciate both of you for raising your hand and volunteering to take on that role. Moving on to item nine B, Housing Trust Trustees. Do we have a motion here?
The motion would be for, it looks like we have six individuals for two-year terms. Sarah Fowler from the Housing Authority, Gail Severt from the Community at Large, Charlie Tocotsky, Community at Large, Matthew Lowry from the Planning Board, Harold Mateo, Community at Large, and Paula Thompson from the Commission on Disabilities, with three one-year terms, Bill Boudry from the Finance Committee, Maureen Hickey, representing Council on Aging, and myself, Michael McLean, representing the town council.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I do want to say this is another one where we had another great set of applicants, and so certainly hope that, you know, all of the individuals stay involved and stay active, and there are no shortage of opportunities for us to fill board and commission seats. Hopefully, we'll see some of these names again. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a vote on the motion to appoint the nominees to the Housing Trust Trustees as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
And if I could just say, by way of proscript, that all of the applicants were excellent. We had nine positions for 11 people to fill, so, you know, please come back again.
Absolutely. Now, we always say this is a town run by volunteers, so the more volunteers we have active, the better off we are. And thank you, Counselor McLean, for volunteering for that, as well as the town council representative. Moving on to item nine C, Arts Council. Do we have a motion here?
Yes, I would move that we appoint Getano Zagami for a term expiring in 2025, and Beatrice Flamia for a term expiring in 2026.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Ms. Flamia for a term expiring in 2026, and Mr. Zagami for a term expiring in 2025? Any opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. So thank you very much again to everyone who applied for all of these appointments. We look forward to your contributions to the community. Item number 10, Contracts. Mr. Mayo, would you like to tee this off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am very pleased to present to the town council, which knows that the three unions that we are out of contract right now, which are the only three unions that their contract had expired, they expired on June 30th. That would be the two police unions, one being the police patrolman officers and one being the senior officers, and the fire department, which has one union. I'm pleased to say that we, after many months of negotiations with both unions, I'm ready to present these contracts to the town council, so they can be voted on at town meeting less than a week from today, Saturday. So I've cut it closer in my life, but we did wisely put it on the agenda, the warrant for town meeting, so I can do that. I'll start with the fire, and again, this is the entire fire department, with the exception of the fire chief and the deputy fire chief. These are three-year contracts, so they will expire on June 30th, 2026. In this contract, we'd be looking for a cost of living increase for each year of 2.5%. So that 2.5% in fiscal year '24 that we're in here now, fiscal year '25, and fiscal year '26, a 1% increase each year in educational incentives, and a one-and-a-half increase per year in EMT or medical professional incentive, and those are split at half-years, so it's three-quarters each half of the year. This deal has been approved by the fire union executive team and was approved by the full union on November 6th, 2023. Also involved in this are limitations on days off, which will help us with overtime. We're also looking to our firefighters to be more physically fit. A lot of them are, they're really in great shape, they're all much younger than we are. They can't beat a couple of these members around the lake on running, but I think they're pretty good for the most part. And I feel that this is a very fair contract for both the union and for the town, and it is sustainable as we go forward with our regular budgets and with other contracts. The cost for this contract that I'll ask for at town meeting is $250,000, and that'll be handled out of free cash, because the budget's already set.
Do we have a motion on the fire contract?
Move to approve the fire contract as negotiated by the town administrator and ratified by the fire union.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it seven-zero.
Thank you. For the police contracts, and I can handle them the same, because the terms are the same, even though there's two different unions, so I wouldn't want to have two separate votes, but the parameters are the same for each contract. Like the fire department, these are three-year contracts, so fiscal year '24 that we're in here now, fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26. The cost of living for each of those increases 2.5% each year. There is the accreditation or post-commission, you might have it, which is merit-based, and that's at 1.5% each year, fiscal year '24, '25, and '26. And there is a mental health component to this as well, and that is 1% each year, although that is split every six months. The total cost of this is $275,000. It is, again, rounded up to cover overtime, as I did with the fire department, and it'll also be used out of free cash. If you want to take these separately, the patrolmen's union is $185,000, and the fire department is, excuse me, and the superior officers is $90,000. And I've got to say again, you know, we have a fabulous first responder department, and I include all our police and all our fire and other town workers in that as well, but these three contracts have enough. It is a tough tenor out there, very professional negotiations with both reunions, and I really believe that we have the top fire and top police departments, and really, we are the envy of our surrounding communities, and I hear from them, my fellow managers, so I know that. So I'm very happy that both these contracts are also fair and sustainable, and we'll be able to handle them years to come. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Let's actually take these separately. Do we have a motion for the patrolmen's union contract?
Move to approve the patrolmen's contract as negotiated by the town administrator and ratified by the patrolmen's union.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the patrolmen's union contract? Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Do we have a motion on the superior officers' contract?
Move to approve the superior officers' contract as negotiated by the town administrator and approved by the superior officers.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to first, again, thank you, Mr. Mayo, for the work that you've done in this regard, I know that this was a long process, and I thank our police and fire for working so collaboratively with you to get to this point. I absolutely agree that our police and fire are the envy of our area, probably of our Commonwealth, frankly. They're just the premier departments in what they do. And in this environment, especially when we're looking, we're hearing so much in the news about collective bargaining agreements and union contract negotiations going awry, everything from screen actors to auto workers to teachers nearby in other communities, and the fact that our police and fire were able to come to the table and work with you for the betterment of our community in a way that is sustainable budgeting, is a thoughtful approach, that matters. It matters tremendously to every taxpayer in our town, because I know we have first-rate police and fire who will do anything, you know, to protect our community, and they really care for our community, and I think that this shows in the kind of negotiation that with your steady hand and their steady negotiating team, we're able to arrive at, which is to the benefit of every person living in this community. So thank you to you for all of your work, thank you to police and fire for all that you've done to get us to this point, but I think we should be incredibly proud of where we ended up here, and I look forward to thanking them for the commitment that they have.
I do know that they really appreciate the commitment and the support of the council, so thank you.
Any other comments on the superior officers' contract? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve? Opposed? Eyes carry, motion carries seven-zero. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayo, we know this is a lot of work. And just to echo Counselor Dombrowski, thank you to our police officers, our firefighters, and the unions for kind of working through this. You know, it was not always an easy negotiation, but one that was conducted, I think, respectfully and in a spirit of collaboration. I think that's wonderful to see. All right, moving on to item 11, donations. Do we have a motion to approve a donation of $25 to the senior center?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Is there a motion to approve a composite donation of $1,310 to the library?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero with the thanks of the council. And item number 12, we have a proposal in front of us for a one-day liquor license for a Chamber of Commerce networking event, Paint Night. Anything, Mr. Mayo or Ms. Dalton, anything on this to highlight for the council?
Do you have anything, Sheri?
Nope, they're all set, they're approved in Glavinda. It all, you know, their backgrounds, but they needed to do, so we're all set.
Great.
I think it actually sounds like a pretty good night, to tell you the truth.
Well, and I have to say, so this is actually at the Albion Cultural Exchange, and I really am excited that this is another way in which we've been able to kind of activate that facility for the community. I've heard, I have not had a chance to go to the open mic nights that have been there, but I've heard wonderful things about them, and again, this is just a great way to show off, I think, and asset to the town and engage folks, so I'm very excited to hear about that. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the one-day liquor license for the networking event.
Seconded.
Great, and just for the record, that event is November 30th. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Item 13, approval of minutes. Do we have a Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 16th, 2023 town council meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Do we have a motion to approve the tri-board meeting minutes of October 26th, 2023?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, was that 7-0 or are you abstaining? Okay, thank you. So motion carries 6-0 with one abstention. Great. Thank you for that little detour on the latter half of our agenda. Let's go back to item number five, public engagement. Ms. Dalton, do we have anyone on yet for public engagement? Or do we need to push that off until 7:00?
No, we actually do. We have John Burke with us, so I can bring him over.
All right. While we're waiting for the folks participating in public engagement, when you come on, we'll ask you to introduce yourself and give your address and to please limit your remarks to three minutes. So, Mr. Burke, please go ahead.
Thank you, John Burke, 168 Albion Street. And I want to thank you all for your public service. As an avid cyclist and somebody who is out on the streets riding my bike on a very regular basis, I heard a comment, some of you are runners. I want to just say that I know later on there's going to be some discussion about a bike plan and bike lanes. The sidewalks around town are in a state where it's very dangerous to ride your bike anywhere on a continuous basis. Albion Street from the railroad station to the Stonem line has been torn up all summer. It's really been embarrassing. But really, the big picture is the, around Lake Winnapoet, and there needs to be more lanes. If there are runners there around, you know, it's a very dangerous situation. I looked at the map, it amazes me that people haven't been seriously hurt riding their bikes or running on Main Street or North Ave around Lake Winnapoet. The parking, the allowance of parking along Main Street, along the lake, has got to go. There are eight side streets where people could park and have access to the lake, but the road, according to the plan that's going to be discussed later tonight, needs to be narrowed for automobiles and widened for pedestrians, runners, and cyclists. Also proposed is to make it much easier to get to the high school and the Break Heart Reservation, and I strongly encourage all of you that that would be money very well spent for the town. The last thing is, is that a very inexpensive thing to do would be to raise awareness among automobile drivers around the rights that bicyclists have. Signage is cheap. The people driving their cars are not aware of what a bike lane means. They really are very rude and, quite frankly, are generally often aggressive towards cyclists. And some inexpensive signs, as we come into the town of Wakefield, particularly around Lake Winnapoet, explaining that bicyclists are allowed to be on the road and where there are those bikes extensible into the road, the bicyclist actually has the right of way. So, thank you for listening. I really strongly encourage you to spend the money. The risk to children, adults, cyclists, walkers is significant in the town, and I think you owe it to the town to spend those assets to improve the experience and make it safer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Burke. Appreciate you coming in tonight. Sherri, do we have anyone else online for public comment?
Yeah, we did get a public comment from Patrick Kroyak. I did forward it to you all. He did not want to speak tonight, but he did make a comment. Jonathan, do you have that, or would you like me to read it?
I do, I can read it out to folks. It says, "I'm writing to encourage the town council to adopt the full measures put forth in the bike and ped plan to make Wakefield safer, more affordable, and an even better place to live than it is currently." And again, that was Patrick Kroyak of 105 Hopkins Street, Unit 311.
And that is it for tonight, for public engagement.
Thank you. So we are still running ahead of schedule, so again, bear with me. We're going to do this a little bit, you know, this is going to be a little bit choppy. But let's skip ahead to item number 7B, if we have a few minutes to do that. The Friends of BB Library space needs. And just as you're coming forward, just to frame the discussion, we have two agenda items tonight, this and a discussion about the senior center related to occupancy there, that are really intended to be the start of a conversation around potential space needs and opportunities within town buildings. I don't expect that as a council we'll be prepared to kind of vote on anything tonight, but, you know, there are some concepts and ideas and sort of issues that we wanted to bring forward, particularly again, as we think about the space at the senior center. So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and going ahead with your presentation, that'd be great.
Hi, I'm Cindy Schatz, 84th Street, and I'm the co-chair of the Friends of the Libraries book sale. Karen King, 91 Cedar Street, and I co-chair the book sale with Cindy. Now, we have a presentation PowerPoint, and I don't know how that works. I don't know if this is for us to use. Okay. So, what am I pointing at? Oh, there it is. Terrific. Thank you for having us, Friends of the Library. You don't have paper copies, I take it?
No.
Okay. You are probably all aware of Friends of the Library because we run the biggest book sale in the area, not just in Wakefield. Established before, long before you guys were on the boards, before maybe some of you were even around, 1975. We've been a 501(c)(3) since 1990. We give you here our size. We average about 300, just under 350 members annually, so we are a good-sized group. We have many years to run in the book sale. Can't really pin down the numbers because I think we were working with the library running the book sale before we might have even fully come into existence. We're people who were working with it. So at one point, I read an article from 2015 that said that we were doing our 44th annual book sale. I'm like, wow, that's like a really, really long time trying to get the numbers together. So we have a ton of experience in doing what we do, which is why I think we do it so well and bring in such a large amount of money. Our community impact is more than just getting books in the hands of people because after we bring in all of our books, all of our donations, at the end of the book sale, we need to get rid of all those for the next year. So we distribute thousands of books for free. So if you were unfamiliar with that, I've just put up there that we have given away 60 cases of books at public events, being the festival by the lake and the farmer's market, and that was this year's numbers. And in a case of books, there could be 25 books if they are adult novels. It could be 100 books if they are children's books. So I can't really tell you how many books we gave away. When you are collecting up to 15,000 books for sale, you don't really count how many are in a case. We don't have the time for that. Karen worked with the Council of Aging in 2021, and their library had been pretty much decimated. So she had taken over, organized 11 cases of books over there, and this year we brought over four additional cases. So we are keeping our seniors in good reading over there. We have a list of over 40 charities that come to us after the sale's over that get to select books, and they go into all sorts of places, nursing homes, hospitals, halfway houses. Books go out to teachers. Teachers come in and get to select for free. We are, teachers are come, who are, who come and benefit the most are new teachers. Every year, there are people who are teaching for their first year, for their second year, or third year, setting up their classrooms. And they could not be happier because they get to take an unlimited number of books. They can take one case, two cases, three cases. So these are the examples of what we do, making an impact besides selling books and raising money for the library. The purpose of the Friends of the Library is not to sell books. The purpose of the Friends of the Library is to support the library. That's our mission. But it happens to be that the money that we raise through the book sale is a large amount of what goes into the library. If you want to address that from the financial impact? You just want to talk numbers.
Yeah.
So, numbers vary because of COVID. Everything changed in COVID, we all know that. Since January of this calendar year, and the Friends of BB Library runs on a fiscal calendar year. So since January, we have given the BB $50,367. $20,000 was given to them late spring to support the children's summer reading program. And then Catherine and Jackie came back to us in the fall and asked for another check to support programs during this year that they have no budget for. Museum passes, Jazz on the Plaza, the adult programs that they kind of really grew during COVID that nobody pays a lot, the Author Lecture Series, the Craft Nights at the BB, et cetera. Those are, those are things paid for by the Friends. So that's just since January, $50,000. In '21 and '22 combined, we gave the BB $49,009. And that's a small number because the BB was shut down for so long during COVID and didn't have a lot. So Catherine had money left that had been unspent because of COVID. So the amount that she required from us that year was in fact smaller. So just looking at three years, our combined total is just shy of $100,000. And that's from the Friends. When we look at the revenue generated by the book sale as opposed to membership, so those are our two revenue streams, membership, book sale, 47% of the dollars we have given to the BB have been raised by the book sale. So should there be no book sale, we're going to be, you know, at about 50% of our current ability to fund those programs that the BB offers to the community. Questions on those numbers?
I think we have you go through, and then we can take questions at the end.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, so the book sale really has three parts to it. We work on it about 11 months of the year, literally. So we collect books for months and months and months. Already, we've had three book drops, three collection times this fall. And in between those collection times, which we advertise to the public, we meet people at the herd school and bring in additional books. Or we pick up from homes, from our senior citizens who cannot physically unload that bookcase, put them in boxes, and carry boxes to a car. They email us. I go to their homes and pick up those books. Or they bring books to the senior center and drop them off there. And again, Karen brings them over from the senior center. This past Saturday, there was a large toy and recycle event at the United Methodist Church. You might have seen that on the Wakefield community page. They collected far more books than they could possibly give away. We went over and picked up about 15 boxes of books and brought them over to the herd. So we unexpectedly, our book team was contacted on Saturday morning and said, "We anticipate that we have far more books than people are going to come and get. Will you be able to pick them up at the end?" And within a couple hours, we had that all set. So we collect the books. We process the book, we pack them up, we store them. And then we have the sale, and then we start the whole process over again. What we need, or we are going to be needing, is going to be storage space because right now, we are in the herd school. We've been in the herd school since November of 2019, even though we didn't have a sale in 2020. We never, none of us knew that in November 2019. We moved in that early winter, late fall, and we know that it's one of your priorities to be addressing the future of the herd school. And so that you may be discussing it, you may be putting it on the agenda for next May's annual town meeting, in which case, we've already talked with Steve Mayo. He's already assured us that we can have our sale there next June. But the future is uncertain after that point because it depends on what will the town decide to do? Will they decide to sell it, or will people say, "No, no, we're not ready to get rid of it yet"? And if the town votes to sell it, then you have to put out for bid and get contractors, get architects, et cetera, to work with that. So we are anticipating that there might be a hard ending to our being in that space next year, after next June. So we have written up what we believe are our storage space requirements. We have the numbers on how much space we need to conduct a sale. We have the numbers on how much space we are in right now at the herd school. We are thinking that a minimum storage space would be about 800 square feet. If we look at how many pallets of books we had stored up before the 2021 sale, we had 14 pallets. A pallet is approximately four by four square. We had them packed with boxes four deep, four, like paper ream boxes, deep. I forget what number of boxes that is, but that was about 350, perhaps a little under 350 square feet of boxes, of, you know, on the floor, square feet. But then you need processing space. You need some space to be able to flip through the donations as they come in and space to be able to pack them into boxes. So you can't be counting just the amount of space that you need to store pallets and books. So we're anticipating the 800. Space needs to be dry. The herd primarily is. It's very humid. We have, we had to buy iron dehumidifier, and we were emptying it once a day during the summer, all summer long, for the past three summers now. Wet books won't sell. We need electricity to run dehumidifier or to run fans, excuse me, or to have light to work. We need a minimum of heat because if it's too cold, people can't work in there, obviously. We are now, our first winter in the herd, the temperature often got down into the 30s because we were the only ones working in there. And because it was COVID, we also worked with doors, and doors open. Gloves, long johns, boots. It was very uncomfortable, but we worked through that. Right now, we are again the only ones physically working in that building, and so I think the heat has been turned down, and it's been in the 40s and low 50s, which is rather uncomfortable. We'd like to have more heat than that. Our space should be located either on a first floor or have elevator access. We know that the Warren School has elevator access to the second and third floors. We have not seen the Warren School, but we do realize that you are looking at using it differently than it is used right now, using the upper floors that the senior center is not using, the Council of Aging is not using. So that's a potential, if that would be something you were able to provide. Access to the space, obviously, we need to get time to bring donations in. We have, we need to have time to go in and process it. Right now, there are a small number of us, the book sale team, and there are four on the book sale team. There's two coordinators and then two other people. And each one of us has a key to the herd. We are very responsible custodians of the herd without being the custodians or the janitors. When we are in and out, we always check to make sure that the door we came in is closed and secure when we go out. We are people who have discovered when there was water coming in through the bathroom windows, through the kitchen windows, and we alerted DPW when there was trouble in the basement. So we have, you know, when I go in and working there, if I'm the only person working in there, you know, all the doors are locked. If I hear anything, I go and check it out. If there's someone else who's coming to work to move furniture around, I introduce myself and I say, "Hey, I'm working on the Torium. Just want to let you know that somebody else in the building." And if there's a problem and I can identify it, then I right away send a text to my contact at the DPW, and I will say, "There is a problem." We did find out one time we were in working, and we discovered that one of the side doors of the building was open, had been, had been left open. And we sent a notice right away to the police and let them know because we kind of figured out who must have come in through that door, but it was not one of our staff. So those are our requirements as we see them. We have a lot more detail that we could provide if you have need for it. So what questions might you have for us?
Thank you. So I'm actually going to ask if we can hold questions for now only because we have to. I'm sorry, I know we've bounced around on our agenda, but we do have to go back to our public hearings that we have scheduled. So if you're able to stay for that, and we can come back to questions when those are completed, is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your flexibility. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we will move, I don't know if we're moving back or forward at this point, but we're going to move to item 6A, which is our public hearing related to a transfer of stock for KBP Incorporated. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Great, any discussion? No, we'll take a roll call vote for this. Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yeah.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. So the hearing is officially open. And it looks like we've got some guests on, on Zoom. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and letting us know why you're here.
Thank you, Counselors. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for KVP Inc. Along with me on this Zoom hearing is Kushtani Patel. Before the board, this is an internal transfer of stock for KVP Inc., which does business as Andy's Liquors at 354 Main Street in town. Vajudev Patel, who is currently the 100% shareholder, is transferring 50% of his shares to Kushtani Patel. There's no changes to the president and treasurer, secretary director, no changes to the licensed manager whatsoever. So from an outward perspective, the day-to-day operation of the store remains the same, just an internal transfer of stock. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions that the council may have.
Just to clarify, I don't know if this is not correct on our agenda. The DBA is listed on our agenda as Jeffrey's Liquors, is that correct? Or you said it's Andy's, sir?
Correct, yep.
Sherry, is that a?
No, so the, the official, the official name is KVP Inc., doing business as Jeffrey, Jeffrey Liquors, that's how the ABCC has that current license.
Okay. But the corporate-
Yeah, we'll have to look, yeah, we'll have to look into how the ABCC has it. But in any event, the application is for KVP Inc., which is at 354. We'll have to do some more digging into why that DBA is not updated.
Okay. And the corporate entity, the KVP Inc., is correct. Is that right?
Correct, yes. Yeah, the corporation's correct, 100%. Yep.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Dobrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for coming on this evening. This is actually a great opportunity because I've, I've really been interested in being able to speak to ownership of Andy's, Jeffrey's, whatever you want to call it, at 354. That has long been, I think, one of the most dilapidated eyesores that we have on Main Street. And the facade is terrible. It, it, I think is, is, runs counter to all of what we're trying to do within our community to try to enhance the, the visual appeal of our downtown. And so I, I realize that you're looking to just change ownership, but I also think with, with ownership of any business should come both responsibility and pride. And it doesn't present as, as, as either are being demonstrated here through this ownership. So when we talk about, I, I know it's a simple stock transfer, but what are we talking about in terms of what that could represent from a, a building facade improvement? And I, I just don't see it. I see a lot of litter around there, I see plenty of nips, and I, I see a facade that just continues to deteriorate. I think even right now, there's probably still a plastic vinyl sign up there that has said Andy's Liquors, I think, for the last number of years. So who owns, who owns the actual property? Does, does KVP own the property or just the business within the property? And why is it that, you know, there's been no effort to try to improve the facade or the aesthetics? Because candidly, this business is a bad neighbor to everyone else on Main Street. I think it's probably the, the, the worst property that I can, that I can picture in that area, and there's a lot of room for improvement for several of them.
I can't address a lot of those internal concerns. I mean, before the board is the transit, I mean, this is an internal transfer of stock. That being said, I don't believe my client has been made aware of any complaints by the town. Certainly, they'd be happy to address those issues. I, I think it'd be appropriate to do it at a different time, but if we could get information as to who to meet with, I mean, we, certainly they would take all of that into consideration, but that's not before the board tonight.
No, it's up, but the owner is. And I, and I think it's important that when we have an owner of a business, just as with any other business, when we have an owner that's come before us and we have a property that, that presents in an unpresentable form, I, I think it becomes an ongoing town concern. And I think it's important for the owner to hear it directly from the town council, or at least from this town councillor, I, I don't want to speak for everyone else. To my left is, is our town administrator. Across from me is our economic development director, both of whom are tremendous resources relative to this. So I guess I'd be interested in knowing whether the owner has, I mean, you, this can't be a surprise to the owner that, that the building presents, or the facade presents, in incredible disrepair. So, you know, what if any steps, I'd be here, interested to hear from the owner or her representative, what if any steps have been contemplated, have been thought about? Is this not on the owner's radar that the, the property presents in, in the current shape that it is, massively deteriorated? You know, what, what is the owner intending to do going forward, especially if, if she's taking the, the share interest that she's petitioning us for tonight?
Hi, yeah, so my name's Kushtani Patel, I can definitely speak a little bit to that. So we have put in an application for this sign and the landlord has denied it. So we've been aware about that and the landlord has not been willing to make any sort of capital improvements. We've tried numerous times, so it's kind of been an ongoing battle in that regards.
And who is the landlord who owns that property?
I'm not sure. I'd have to speak with the current owner. But I know that's what they had told me, like Vajudev Patel, like in our ongoing discussions, that's what I was informed of, but I'd have to speak with the exact, in terms of getting the exact information and name, I'd have to speak with our current owner, Vajudev Patel.
So the, based on that, based on the filing, it seems like it must, might be Mr. Fermany, does that sound accurate to you?
I'm not, I wouldn't, I don't remember of a call exactly at the moment.
Yeah, unfortunately, that wouldn't be part of our application for a stock transfer, but we could certainly look into it.
Okay, yeah, I, I think-
We can get that, we can get that answer. I mean, in, in some regards, I, I understand all your concerns, I mean, we don't mean to push it, you know, aside at all. You know, in some regards, these tenants are somewhat hamstrung, you know, by their landlords and the improvements that are allowed by them. That being said, trash, litter, you know, loitering, I mean, there are things that, you know, our clients know that are well within their control and certainly they'd be happy, you know, to work with the town in order to fix the things that they can address. You know, some of it may just be somewhat outside of their control based on, you know, the landlord and their lease and their obligations under such.
Well, I mean, they also do have a very large storefront, there's large windows there, and from the interior, the way that, you know, the, the, the business is, is set up, it's, it's not really conducive to, you know, an appealing aesthetic from the outside either. So I would encourage, and that is well within your domain. So I'd encourage you to think about ways in which we could, we could have a more presentable storefront for the town, because I think ultimately that would be better business for you. I'm not in the business of trying to tell you how to run your business, but I can say that as a consumer, you know, your business really stands out as one that, that is awfully unappealing, both from a facade standpoint, but also looking through the window and what you see. So I would really encourage you to look at ways to do that, work with our economic development director and our town administrator, both of whom would be more than willing, I'm sure, to provide you, you know, with some guidance and resources and some creativity there. Because it's important.
Of course.
It, it's the center of our town and I think it's an important property and you have an opportunity to do something right there, to really make it presentable, and I think it makes for good business. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think I agree with you.
Any other comments or questions? Nope, seeing none, do we have, sorry, seeing none, do we have a motion on the table?
Motion to approve the transfer of stock for KVP Inc., DBA, Jeffrey's, at the moment, Liquors, located 354 Main Street.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, congratulations. And certainly our economic development team is available every weekday, and I know we'd love to hear from you and figure out ways in which we can help you enhance your business and improve, improve your, your, your business. So good luck.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I actually apologize, I should have taken public participation for this. Is there any public participation before we close the hearing? All right, seeing none, then we don't need to take a revote. I will take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote on this one. Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yeah.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much and again, good luck to you. Moving on to item 6B, I'll entertain a motion to open the tax classification hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Chair McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. So Mr. Mayo and Mr. Santinello, thanks for joining us. Steve, if you want to kick it off?
I can jump in right before Victor takes the microphone and doesn't give a damn for the rest of the evening. As the town council is aware, in, in December of 2022, we actually amended the revenue section of our financial policy. And I've said before that the financial policy is very important. It is dry, boring stuff, but I tell you, the bond council and bond rating agencies love it. So part of that analysis that we did in, in 2022 was to kind of determine whether or not, or under what circumstances would the town council by policy not go the full 2.5% on the tax levy? And in the packages memo, or you've seen the memo before, and it's my analysis and Kevin Gill's analysis, that because of our good reserves, because of our excellent new growth this year, because of getting in the power line, when, and when you factor in the contracts that we talked about previous this evening, and factor in what we have in stabilization and in free cash and other, and other reserves, that we are actually, to go the full 2.5%, would actually exceed the policy. So the town assessor's numbers here tonight are based on the fact that we are not going the full 2.5%, that we are leaving $267,037 on the table in the taxpayer and actually going somewhere in the area of 2.38%. That is per the policy of the board. I certainly suggest and, and think the board should follow their policy. Again, it's not, it's not going to make anybody rich, but it does give savings to the average residential property owner of about $31 a year and about $89 a year in commercial property owners, based on their assessed value. So what we're putting in front of you today certainly follows the policy as voted by this board in December of '22. And interestingly enough, we've actually, in nine out of the last 13 years, have, you know, for one reason or another, and even before the policy, made a concerted effort not to go the full 2.5%. And oftentimes, things happen in rounding, but in, you know, 2020, 2000 fiscal year, 2013 to 2020, we did not go the full 2.5% by design, as we are, as we are this year per our policy. So I'm actually quite pleased about that. So that's reflected in all of Victor's numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Victor, please take it away.
Well, here we are, fiscal year 2024, tax classification. What we're here to do tonight is four things. Selection of a minimum residential factor, selection of an open space discount, granting of a residential exemption, and granting of a small commercial exemption. A residential factor of one would yield a single tax rate of $12.41 per thousand of value for all properties across the board. You get that simply by dividing the full tax levy by the full value, just under 7.4 billion, and then you multiply that by 1,000, which comes out to 1241. Chapter 200 allows Wakefield to select a factor less than one, thereby shifting more of the tax burden onto commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. Historically, Wakefield has chosen the maximum allowable shift factor. You take a look at this next slide, I light up, I just put together the options at various intervals. Again, a factor of one would yield, because of our senior tax relief plan, it would yield a slightly higher residential tax rate of $12.45 with a CIP tax rate of 1241. And these numbers are figured with senior discount, that's why we have them filed in our office by the end of September, so we know how many people and how much the program will cost. And as you can see, at 1.75, the anticipated residential tax rate would be about 1126 and the commercial tax rate would be 2172. This is our third year offering the senior tax relief, 265 applications were received, 243 were approved. The reason why some applications may not be approved is property isn't a trust and the owner is not a trustee, nor have any beneficial interest in the property, or they may own a second home or a condo or something like that, that there'd be, they have means beyond the intended class recipients. The median amount granted this year was 1,200 and the total tax amount was $261,369. The smallest senior tax relief option was $35, interestingly enough. The exemption added 4 cents to the residential tax rate, which translates into $30.24 on the average single-family tax bill in Wakefield. Folks that receive the maximum credit of $1,200 will see an approximate 16.4% reduction in real estate taxes based on the average single-family value. And we'd be remiss if we didn't thank Karen Burke, the Council on Aging, and those folks down there, they're a tremendous resource to help us get the word out. They always support us and we're always happy to return those in-kind services. The average single-family value this year will be 756,500. That is based on review of all single-family sales during calendar year 2022. At these various shift factors, we have what the anticipated tax bill would be. If you shift to 1.75 at an 1126 tax rate, the average single-family tax bill is estimated to be $8,518. Again, bold print represents the maximum shift allowable for 2024, and the maximum allowable shift, as you can see from this table, results in a savings of $900 to the average single-family homeowner. The average commercial value is just slightly under 1.5 million, but the median commercial value is 593,900. I like to incorporate the median value in there only because it seems more reflective of your smaller businesses, the folks that are, you know, going in every day, doing work, trying to do the best they can for the community and themselves. And I broke out what the anticipated taxes would be for those businesses. Add a 1.75 shift, the commercial tax bill would be slightly over $32,000, and the median tax bill would be slightly under $13,000. Okay, I have a quick update to this side, slide. At the maximum allowable shift with the selected fact, minimum residential factor of 904203, yes, the Department of Revenue carries us out to the millionth. If I had the original, we would be slightly under 1.75. Thank goodness for Kevin Gill, he puts his numbers into the tax rate recap and I'm able to do better modeling. Unfortunately, it's typically right before the meeting, but the MRF, if you choose to go to 1.75, would be .904203. That would yield a residential tax rate of 1126 and a commercial tax rate of 2172. And again, these rates could change a penny throughout the approval process with the State Department of Revenue.
Victor, is it 02 or 03? Because you keep on saying, you said three, but it says two on the slide.
It's three. It's three, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mine is updated, this slide is-
That's totally, that's what I thought.
So just to clarify, 0.904203?
Yes.
Got it.
See, I'm listening.
Thank you for the eagle eye.
And observer, too.
Yeah, yeah. We listen to you, Victor.
I like to put mistakes in here, see who's awake, who catches them. I don't like to bore people here. The average single-family value in 2022 was about 701,000. For 2023, it's 756,500. The tax rate went from 1173 down to 1126, or down 4.2%. The average tax bill went up- The average tax bill went up from 8224 to 8518, an increase of $294, or 3.5%. The average commercial value went up just a little bit, 1.7% from $1,464 to $1,489. The commercial tax rate came down almost 74 cents from 2246 to 2172, a decrease of 3.4%. And the average commercial tax bill went down about $530, or a decrease of 1.6%. Fiscal '24 is the 10th year of the full debt exclusion for the Galvin Middle School. Maybe I should take the word "new" out of there. It's not new, well, it's new-ish. Debt exclusion adds 2.7 million to our 2024 tax levy. It adds 31 cents to the residential tax rate, or $234 to the average single-family tax bill, and 59 cents, or $879, to the average commercial bill. There is approximately 246,000 of Wakefield Memorial High School debt included in that number. Sales activity. As you can see, 2021, there was 233 single-family sales, 214 in 2022. The days on market decreased slightly from '24 to '22, and the average sale price really didn't move a lot. We were at 738.7 last year, we're at 744.4 this year. Open space discount. That's the definition up there. Maximum exemption of 25%. Wakefield has no land classified as open space that meets the state's definition. Residential exemption. A residential exemption of up to 35% of the average residential value, which also includes any residential vacant lots, anything like that, can be granted to owner-occupied properties. It's only adopted in a handful of communities like Boston, Cambridge, Chelsea, Brookline. What happens is, if you do this, the residential tax rate rises significantly, several dollars. Approximately 30% of the homes in Wakefield would shoulder that burden for, you know, an exemption for owner occupancy, for being a residential exemption living here. But 90% of the community owns and occupies their single-family homes as their primary residence. And it would adversely affect the higher-valued home versus the lower-valued home. Small commercial exemption of up to 10% property valuation for commercial properties only. Eligible businesses cannot have more than 10 employees, as certified by the Department of Employment and Training. Building value cannot exceed $1 million. One business in a building cannot qualify unless every business qualifies. The exemption does go to the building owner, and the assessment department is unaware of any businesses that strictly meet this requirement. And for some filler at the end, some various community comparisons, just to let you know what our competition is doing. And I say "our" competition because I think what we do in Wakefield is fantastic, with the talk of the other towns. Average single-family tax bill, you could see what it's done from 2006 to present. We can also see what commercial tax bills did from 2003 to present. And what other communities are doing for a tax shift. Anyone have any questions?
First of all, just before we go to any questions, thank you for the presentation, as always. And I feel like every year we do this. I sort of pick up another data point or learn something new from it. So, appreciate all the thought that went into it and the calculation down to the millionth decimal place in our minimum residential factor. Do we have questions or comments from the council? Counselor McLean.
So, Victor, just from my own edification, our 2.38 approximate total tax levy increase, we have 3.5% residential increase. Is that because the commercial values proportionally have dropped?
It's because residential values rise quicker than commercial values. They raise more than commercial values do.
Right.
And that's been true historically.
When I was chair of the Board of Assessors, we had 69% versus 31% commercial participation.
And you can see in that period how much the value has.
And where are we now, 8119, somewhere in that range?
After we shift, yeah, we're down around 81, 82.
Yeah, so definitely a burden shift over to the residential.
Yes.
Not saying there's anything wrong about it, it's just, it is what it is.
Exactly.
Right. And even though sales, as you showed, were flat, the residential rates, or the average residential home value.
Value went up, yeah.
Went up.
Yep.
So, can you explain that, just for?
Sure. Sales are coming in at, once we do our analysis, and being a former assessor yourself, do our sales analysis, the average ASR, the average assessment to sales ratio is coming in at about 88%. The goal is to get them to about 95%. So, what we have to do is work those sales, change any components of those properties that weren't properly reflected in the property record card. We come up at 88, 89%, which means on average, we would have about a 6% increase, but that's going to vary by neighborhood, by style of home, things of that nature.
Yeah, and we've been doing annual updates for a number of years now, right?
Every year I've been here.
Yep. I remember when they changed that. We went to three years and then we went to annual.
It was good sense to do it even before it became mandatory.
Exactly, yeah. That's all I have, just a few questions, clarifications. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Dabrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for this, Victor. I first just want to say that you were at the Senior Center a few weeks back, speaking with the veterans, yourself being one, and thank you for your service. And it was remarkable, the kind of feedback that people provided afterwards. You just, your service to the community, the way you can lay things out and explain is, I think, second to none. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I was looking through the historical numbers, commercial versus residential. And by my math, if you look at the 2006 forward, the residential has more than doubled about 2.2, you know, times. And then the commercial has, I mean, ticked up comparatively, quite modestly. And I think that, to me, sounds a little bit of an alarm bell because we continue to have challenges, I think, in town. And I can think of some other communities that have lost their commercial base in exchange for residential. And I have some concerns about that, especially when we talk about the new development, Foundry being one such example, but there are plenty of others. Do you have any kind of sense? It sounds like you're saying 81 to 82% of the total, I guess, tax base or properties are residential currently. Do you have any sense of, you know, kind of, if there is a sweet spot and if there is where that falls for a community of our composition?
First off, even doing nothing, there's going to be an inherent inequity, as you picked up on, because residential values have exploded. When I began here, it was the late, great Mayor Manino that led the charge for special legislation for communities that were already at their max shift to shift further. We did that my first year here. We didn't go to 200% because that was year one. I was here the second year that legislation went to 197, and then we scaled it back. Because of the bump in housing prices at the time, what was happening is a reverse shift in the tax rate. You're talking around it this evening, but we're finally, you know, addressing that. Why does that occur? It's just that residential values have exploded exponentially compared with commercial values. I can't use a commercial sale to value the entire commercial segment. We're required to use income and expense. And oftentimes, a commercial sale is a private sale. It's not what we refer to as an arms-length transaction. Oh, there's an ad for a $10 million office building, I want to go buy that. That doesn't happen. Sometimes you have investors buy vis-à-vis a REIT. That's not an arms-length sale. So, every year, we send out income and expense to all property owners, four families and above. We rely on the data they give us, checked against regional indices for us to work our models and produce values. But again, the increases just aren't there because rents are still high, costs are still high. There's, fortunately, we didn't see a huge uptick in vacancy during COVID. Leases were locked in, people still paid, even though cars weren't there. What we're seeing now is some of the large commercial owners deciding what they want to do. Is residential an option? That is unnerving to me because every piece of commercial, you wipe off that side of the slate, it gets added on to the residential side. I guess the best thing to do is try and attract between our Economic Development Director, Steve, and everyone else at the table, attract as much commercial development as we can in this community.
I think that's the headline from this because if we continue along this path, it's going to be quite problematic. I mean, obviously, you can see the commercial values have to increase. The other piece that I wanted to point out is, I appreciate Mr. Mayo mentioning the board policy from the end of last year. I did not support that policy. I do not support that policy either. The policy inherently says to tax to the max unless you meet a certain level of criteria to not do that. And I just think that's wrong. In this year, we're talking about a maximum allowable shift, which makes total sense, of course. You want to be able to shift from the residential to the commercial. But, so I don't have an issue with that. What I have an issue with is the fact that still baked into that is essentially 2.4% instead of 2.5% increase. And that is, you know, while we're not going to full 2.5% under what's being proposed here, we're just about there. And I think that's an issue because it's also not just 2.4%. It's 2.4% coupled with the fact that the property value increased. So, to your point, Victor, we've had, you know, the net-net is like 3.5% in terms of what the increase to the tax bill will be for a resident. Because, you know, we're not just saying, oh, your taxes are going to go up by 2.38 or 2.4%. So, to go, that's the percentage that is baked into the formula that then obviously correlates directly with whatever your property value is. So, as your property value goes up, then that means that your percentage is higher. So, I think this is a, it's, I think it's a very bad policy. I don't support it. I think that the notion that in this financial climate, we are going to be increasing taxes by just about taxing to the max and then ultimately ending up with probably a net impact to the average taxpayer of about 3.5% of a property tax increase this year, I think is wrong. And I think we're doing, the residents and taxpayers are disservice by doing it. So, while I support the concept of the maximum allowable shift, I don't support the resulting percentages that would be applied against the properties. So, I just want to be clear in my position on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Johnson. How many seniors did you say will help this year? What was that figure?
246, I believe.
246? And it costs the average taxpayer.
243, sorry.
243, and it costs the average taxpayer $30 a year.
$30 this fiscal year, yep.
For $2.50 a month, the citizens of Wakefield are able to help 243 seniors retire in their homes.
Age in place, stay vibrant in the community. Yes, sir.
And looking at this chart for a moment, and looking at the percentage increase of the 3.5%, I'm no mathematician, but when I look at that, that's the lowest increase that the residents have had from a percentage standpoint since 2017, which was 3.47%, and it's the second-lowest increase over the last decade, going all the way back through 2014. Would that be accurate?
Second or third, but yes, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else, any questions or comments? I'll add a question, and Victor, you touched upon this with sort of the commercial trends that we're seeing. Have you seen, you know, it sounds like we were able to kind of hold commercial values up reasonably well during kind of COVID era because folks were locked into leases. But are you seeing an impact in sort of commercial valuations as a result of higher vacancies or anything like that? Or is it still too early to tell?
Nothing significant either way. And I'm relying on, I might pass like a 2% or 3% increase to commercial, but when you're passing a 6% increase to residential, which is already 82% of the pie.
Yep.
It pales in comparison, and you see that in the resulting numbers.
Well, and the reality, too, is it's actually, residential is 89% of the pie without the shift.
Yeah, before, just, yes.
So, I mean, if you look just total, you know, at pure valuation, it's 8911 now, which Counselor McLean is a far cry from when you were on the Board of Assessors. And any sense, you know, in terms of your conversations with other assessors or the state, and any early warnings that we're seeing about where commercial values are going from other communities that we should be heeding?
Not from other communities, some of which I work in. But basically, what folks in my realm are concerned about is the possibility that a large commercial owner may decide to pull the trigger and go residential. That's it. You know, we try recognizing vacancy rates at a more realistic rate. We're responsive to changes with the capitalization rate. But again, that's small compared to what they could get by converting it to residential.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yep, Counselor McLean.
Yeah, I would like to add that, along with Counselor Dabrowski, I also opposed the policy last year. And I think it's good that we have the reserves we have and we actually maxed out the reserves. So, I was wrong on that. I didn't think we hit that amount. But if I had the choice, I might be willing to go lower than that 2.38. However, the policy is what the policy is, and therefore, I'm not making any motions because I think we are where we are. But it does seem that some of what we heard last year in terms of rumors of our fiscal demise were perhaps overstated or exaggerated because we do have full reserves right now.
Which is better than the alternative.
Indeed, indeed, indeed.
All right. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. So, we have a series of motions to go through. Vice Chair McLean, do you want to take us through motion number one?
Well, let's see if I can get the number right, Victor. I would move to select .904203 for the minimum residential factor, which allows for the maximum allowable shift.
Seconded.
Any discussions on that? Yep, Counselor.
I just want to point out again that I support the concept of the maximum allowable shift, but I do not support a policy that presupposes that we start taxing to the max of 2.5% and only work down under a rather stringent criteria, which we've seen has only gotten down a tenth of a percentage point. So, for that reason, I'm voting against it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to set the minimum residential factor at 0.904203? Please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries 6-1. Motion number two.
As we have no applicable open spaces according to the Director of Assessments, I would move that we vote no on an open space discount.
I second that.
Any discussion? I know this is a controversial one. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next up?
I move that we vote no on granting a residential exemption.
Seconded.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And last but not least?
I move that we vote no on granting a small commercial exemption, as it would apply to no one in town.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carry, oh, sorry, opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Anything else, Mr. Santinello, Mr. Mayo, on this topic before we close? Oh, again, I forgot to actually take public comment. I apologize. Do we have any public comment on the tax classification hearing? All right.
No.
Seeing none, then I will take a, I reminded myself, too. I said to myself, don't forget public comment this time. But seeing no public comment, I will take a motion to close the tax classification hearing.
Seconded.
Any discussion? No, this requires a roll call vote. Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin? Vice Chair McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt? Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much, Victor, for your great work on this. This is not easy stuff, and you do a great job both explaining it and kind of keeping us on track with this. So appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
All right, again, bouncing around, we're going to go back to item 7C. We're going to hold off on 7A for a moment. And if we could ask our friends from the Friends of BB to come back up for questions on their presentation. So any questions or comments from the council on the Friends of BB library presentation? Counselor Dabrowski, and then Counselor McLean?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work that you've been doing, it sounds like, for a really long time. It's a labor of love for sure. One of the things that struck me is when you were talking about the breakdown, I think it was 47% from the book sale and about 53%, I'm assuming that's through like Friends of member dues. Have you explored other ways to be able to fundraise outside of the book sale if the book sale, you know, for whatever reason didn't continue to be an ongoing endeavor?
So I don't know that we normally explore other ways outside of the traditional book sale. We have been desperately brainstorming as a group during the past 12 months. How could we recreate ourselves? Like, could we have books for sale at the Albion Cultural? Like, could we have painting books and sculpture books? And we probably had 15 cases donated to us this year by local artists that we actually thought would, this would add so much to that environment. Could we sell on eBay? And there's, you know, tax consequences to that. But we have a list, the Friends of BB has a list. We do meet monthly. And given that ahead of us, there's a possibility that we will not have space. You know, we are working on that kind of brainstorming. I don't know that, the Friends of BB has been around for 50-plus years. People in this community are really loyal to working the books and, you know, attending an every-year book sale. I mean, it's like the same people come in at the same time. They're at the door waiting for us to open. So I don't know if we've thought about not doing any book sales. Do you agree with that? I'm not sure that that's ever been a conversation.
No. They're having a, every now and then you hear someone say, well, you know, you guys put in so much work, you know, so many hours because just the book sale team itself, the four of us, put in hundreds of hours. And that doesn't count the rest of our volunteers during the course of the year. And we do it willingly, and we love it, and we have a passion for it. And you couldn't pay us a minimum wage or even a dollar an hour and make a profit on the book sale for what we and other volunteers put into it. And so some people have said, like, you put so much into it, you know, it really isn't worth it. Well, we don't count the value of our hours we put into it, just like you might not count how many hours you put into your garden and how much is that tomato worth? That's a $25 tomato if you put on your salad this weekend. Like, no, you can't think of it that way.
This was a bad year, so.
Yeah, right, exactly. It was more than $25 this year.
Really bad year. So there are things that we love about our community, we put the time into, that we can't talk about, calculate the human expense that went into making that available, making that possible. You know, we sometimes daydream inside, wouldn't it be nice to have a little bookstore in town that maybe we'd only have it open three days a week and be run by volunteers? And there are Friends groups who do have small bookstores. When Worcester Public Library was redone, gosh, maybe 20 years ago, they built a space into their library, their new renovated library, for the Friends to run a little bookstore. There's one in, I think it is Cambridge I was hearing about lately, and someone who is involved with managing that said, you wouldn't believe how much work this is. So we haven't had a bookstore here for how many years? Did the one go out that was now a bank?
Royal was there.
Yeah. It's been a long time. And, you know, and our town suffers a bit for that. So the book sale is a, once a year bookstore for our community, plus what we do at the farmer's market once or twice this year, we didn't do it once, and doing again at the festival by the lake. And then the giveaways, it acts as a bookstore for our people. And they come in and they talk and they chat just like they would in a bookstore. It's a big social event, just like Blossoms is a social event and at the same time a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce and for the library. If we had another way of raising, you know, the number of dollars we do every year without doing a book sale, we would talk about it. We have a very small amount of merchandise that the Friends sells. Honey is our biggest one. We've done aprons, we've done book bags, we've done umbrellas. I think we have two or three umbrellas left at the library right now. Surprised those didn't sell out this summer. But those don't bring in very much money at all. So memberships brings in about half, and the book sale brings in about half. So the book sale is very important to the fundraising of the Friends at this point. And book sales are being done throughout the state. North Reading has theirs this past weekend. They do a book collection over four days, 14 hours. They spend collecting books. Then they have their book sale, which runs for four days over a small number of hours, not as many hours as ours is open. They have a room about the size of this studio. They have 25 tables that they have books on. We have 64 tables worth of books. So we raise a large more, much, much more per hour, and we put a lot more effort into it.
I guess the reason I asked is because you had mentioned about Plaza Jazz, which is obviously, you know, a great event. And I was curious as to whether you could leverage that event from like a concession standpoint or a merchandise standpoint or something else like that? Because it draws a pretty significant crowd.
So we actually talked to Catherine a little bit about that in early spring last year. And she actually feels like people don't want to be bothered purchasing something in that event. So she suggested, like, if you want, she said, you know, well, if you wanted to go get bags of chips or something, and I'm not sure that that's what people at Jazz in the Plaza are looking for, is a bag of chips. You know, they're kind of like enjoying the essence of the evening. And so we kind of didn't go forward with that conversation, but we can reopen it.
We have done that in the past. I have sat at Plaza Jazz at a card table with CDs that I've hand-selected jazz CDs to go along with the jazz. And there were a little bit of browsing, but not very much. People were not there to buy other things. They really were there for the group that was on the Plaza that night. And then, of course, the group that's on the Plaza has their own CDs to hawk.
And then finally, I know that when the Superintendent DeBarry was here, we had talked about the opportunities at the Volk currently. Was there any success relative to that?
Karen and I and two other people went and talked with him in May.
Right.
And at that point, they were, you know, they already had their plans underway for their new school. So he had said that if they were doing that, he'd be loving to work with us, that they had, you know, space on the grounds. They had this big, it looks like a five-bay parking garage in their parking lot. He says that's really underutilized for them, and having us in there could have been a possibility. But they need to use that for equipment storage and material storage during their renovation, during the new building construction. And also, if they were going to build something for us, we would need to have a space to put it. So if we were not building on that school land, like, where in town is there space? Well, the Friends do not own any property. We could, you know, confirm that with Victor while he was here, but we own no property in town. We have a post office.
We'd have to pay taxes out of this, I'd be thankful.
We don't even have a mailbox. We rent a post office box in town. We had a, there's a, a volunteers' room in the library was designed for, as a volunteers' room when the library was renovated 26 years ago. It is, I meant to go in there and measure it, approximately 12 feet by 6 feet. And it started as a volunteers' room, but now more than half of it is taken up with library storage, of storage of decorations and other things that they need to cast off and put aside somewhere. So there's no place for us there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McLean?
Yeah, I'm a longtime member and not being intelligent enough to sort, so I lug boxes of books for you guys.
He's in the rain with me often.
Yeah, right. Are you comfortable with 800 square? If that was a number that could be found for you somewhere? Are you comfortable with it?
After putting that number down, it occurred to me that we do own stuff. We own tables. So I did an inventory last September a year ago of what we own. Chairs, milk crates, dollies, dehumidifier, racks, and tables. So we have in the Herd School 64 tables, of which 27 are ours. They either belong to the Friends themselves or they belong to, like, one of the book sale team members who have given it as a long-term loan. We have four large mobile racks, which have been purchased by two of the book sale team members. So those people could potentially back, take them back to their homes, but they were purchased for the use of the Friends. And I'm not sure that the, because I say they're owned by those people because they've never asked for reimbursement from the library or from the book sale team, I mean, from the Friends.
Does that affect your, we don't want to be too large here either because.
Right. You know, it's possible we could put out a request among the members of the Friends and say, who can take two tables and store them in their garage until next June's book sale? And parcel out things. There are some things we would not be able to parcel out and we might have to leave behind. I picked up two very nice, very nice tables from a library and I believe it was Wallfam last year, or two years ago. They had bought them for a summer reading program during COVID, and at the end of the summer, they're like, we don't need them anymore. And they are long and super sturdy, and they do not have folding legs. You should have seen me bring them home in my car. Because I have a Prius V, and we had to disassemble them. But they would be hard to store, even disassembled, because they're large. So, you know, 800 is probably possibly workable. But we may need to parcel things out among members of town. And we don't know about that because we've never had to do that before.
Yeah, and I'd just like to comment that, you know, there are people in our community like myself who actually don't Kindle and do still read books on paper. And there is an economic or ecological, you know, aspect to this too because we are constantly recycling these books and putting them back in the community. The amount of hours that your group puts in, to me, is just phenomenal. Chair said, I want to go, we're a town that runs on volunteers. I think you guys are a prime example of that. I know we have provided space, you know. I'm also, you know, committed to donating to the food pantry. However, you know, they have space in the Americal, they pay for their electric, but they have space in the Americal. So I am hopeful that we can find something for you. And that's why I wanted you to present tonight, to, you know, just air what it is that you do. And again, it's not that you wanted to inherit the, well, first of all, when you do your book drop-offs, if you were at a public building like the Herd, which you have been for a number of years, you do it on the weekend. We have cones set up, we direct the traffic, we try to schedule people so that they'll come in at certain times, keep the flow going. And, you know, we could do that at another public building without necessarily impacting the weekly events that go on at that public building when people are there. As long as there's space, as long as there is, you know, there's the stewardship that you guys provide. So I'm hopeful. Thanks for coming in, and hopefully we can work with the Friends to, because the rent would take away money from the library if you have to go rent somewhere.
And we do coordinate now because when we have an event coming up, I send out something to Mr. Mayo, I send it out to a representative of the police force, I send it to the emergency coordinator, I send it to someone in fire. So they are all aware what's going to be happening at that public building. I say we're going to be doing it on Pleasant Street or in the parking lot between the hours of such and such. We should be starting at this time, we should be ending at this time, just so that you know. And so that's been a great coordination. Prior to being in the Herd and starting in the fall of 2019, we had storage space and a private garage in town and some space in the basement of those people's homes. And they really wanted to get out of the business of doing storage for probably five years before they managed to do that. So it's only been recent that we've really had to be dependent upon the town. We also had to, at the very same time, move where we had our sale because of the fire at the Baptist Church, which is now rising up. And they're going to have a very nice space. Their fellowship hall is going to be not as large as it used to be. But between the fellowship hall and the sanctuary, which is going to have non-fixed seating, it's going to be a larger space that can be used for events than what they had in their previous fellowship hall. So I've already, I've already talked with, well, actually, Jim McBane, whose wife has been the longtime secretary for the Baptist Church. I have the numbers of their space, and I know how that compares to the Herd School. I know how it compares to the previous Baptist Church.
That would be more for the sale than the storage.
That would be sale. You know, we don't know where we'd be in the sale, and we do know that it could take us nine months prior to a sale. Actually, just like setting, trying to get space for a wedding or graduation, you need to book it way ahead. So if you went to book a space in one of the church's large halls and you went five days or so, like we would need to have, you need to be booking that September, October for the previous June.
That's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Smith Galvin?
And maybe this is just touched upon, when you say you're looking for 800 square feet or thereabouts of storage as well as the sale? Are there two different places you're looking for?
We will eventually, assuming that we don't end up in a space, assuming that we have to leave the Herd sometime next summer and that there is not another space that is comparable to it, then we will need two spaces. We will need storage space where we can store books, process books, hold them until the time of the sale. And then, as we used to do, we would move books on either the Sunday or the Monday of Memorial Day weekend to our sale space, which was the Baptist Church. So we could imagine going back to that model again. In which case, we would, and at the Baptist Church, we got the Baptist Church for five days for the low, low cost of $400. Now, that wasn't that long ago. So it's not a case of, oh, my gosh, rent's really gone up. They were graciously granting it to us because to them, it was community service. And the $400 we gave to them, plus flowers for their altar for that next Sunday, was above and beyond really what they expected. But we wanted to make sure that their custodian got paid and that they realized that we were very thankful.
And definitely, your generosity to the library is very, very appreciated. Do you save anything? Do you have anything in assets, anything reserved? Do you put any money aside, or does it all go to the library?
The Friends, yes.
Yeah, no. I mean, the Friends has a budget. You know, and we do carry funds from year to year. How much we carry all depends on what the request is, you know, from the library. The library requests in the past few years are larger and larger. And because of COVID, for instance, like, both membership and book sale went down a little from what it had been five years ago. So I think the bottom line of our budget is actually decreasing a bit from year to year. That's certainly a concern for us. And why we think if we had to eliminate the book sale, which funds almost half of what we do give to the library, that would be an issue, we would be heartbroken. But it would be an issue for the programs at the BB that people absolutely.
So would you save like three or five years of reserves that the BB continue to need?
Oh, no, no. We don't have that much.
Yeah, I don't have, the treasure actually for the Friends of BB has been away. I don't have that final report on hand. We just have our book sale reports.
No, that's fine. I mean, I think what you're facing is what so many nonprofits face, and I work with a lot of nonprofits, and I think we see it here in Wakefield as well. You know, the Boys and Girls Club, the Food Bank. We have nonprofits that are, you know, they're nonprofit, but they're also independent organizations. And I would really love, and Erin is here, I would really love to be working with our nonprofits to be able to do some capital campaigns. I mean, what you do for the library is wonderful. I mean, what you do for the library is wonderful, but, you know, is there a way for Wakefield, you know, to find some storage maybe in the short term? I mean, this has been going on my whole tenure here on the, on the council. You know, find some short term, but I think we need some long-term solutions here. And, you know, that, whether that's a capital campaign, or setting some of the funds aside, not to go to the library, but to go into finding a space where, you know, you can continue to, to evolve and innovate, like Counselor Dombrowski said, and, and try to do it. So I don't know what the solution is, but I think, I, I don't think that just finding town space, as we are going to be more and more pressed for space, is a long-term solution. I think that, you know, we need to help enable you and other nonprofits here in town to, to be able to budget, and to maybe go after some grants and do some other ways to be able to do it. So I think it's kind of a hybrid approach, personally.
Thank you, Counselor. Other questions or comments? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. You alluded to the circumstances that you have to volunteer under, at the Herd. Are you still having to put tarps over the books?
Yes.
Because of the ceiling tile?
I was grooming up fallen plaster on Thursday at our last book drop. Yeah. There's plaster falling every week from the floors and the walls.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Danahue?
I don't know if I have anything to offer, but I do want to say thank you for all of your hard work. I know so many people who look forward every year to the book sale, and it's become such a part of our community that I would hate to see that go away. And I'm hopeful that, you know, somehow we can work together to find space for you somehow. Maybe it takes a lot of creative thinking around that. But, you know, what you have done for, for the community through your book sale, what you've done for the library and the programs that so many people participate in, is really outstanding. And the financial contribution to the library is greatly appreciated. So, you know, I just hope that we can continue having discussions and thinking of space, and specifically for the Friends.
Thank you. And addressing that, and Counselor Smith Galvin's, we did present to the Rotary last May. I, first I got a little feedback, a little bite from one of the churches in town, and then I responded, and then I didn't hear back. You know, it's like I have to talk to my Board of Elders or whatever. I don't know how that church runs, but then I didn't hear back. It's like, okay, maybe you don't have the space that you can allot to us. I did not hear from any of the businesses in town. We've reached out both Chamber and to Rotary, and no one has come forth. Mr. Mayo, you were going to talk to Erin, I don't know whether you talked to her about that from our conversation that we had in August. I have other people that I've talked to who, who've offered to reach out, but at this point, nothing has come across to us that is a possibility. So we have been looking, besides, we were here in April, and here we are back again, six months later. We have checked into a number of churches and clubs in, in Wakefield, almost all the churches and clubs, and have found that, you know, there is no space. It's like the Christmas story, no room at the end. You know, ask politely and ask people, not necessarily, you know, the, the rector here or there, but someone who knows that particular venue intimately, and can confirm to us like, no, I'm sorry, there isn't space. So, you know, somewhere out there, there's got to be space, but we have not been able to identify it.
Counselor Danahue?
Steve, is this, the Albiol Cultural Center, is there space on the second, wasn't that space kind of renovated on the second floor?
No, second floor has no, there's no elevator, first of all.
There's no elevator. Oh, I thought they put an elevator in.
There's a spiral staircase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is probably the.
We're not that.
I thought that they would, I thought that they had put in, I know that.
We're not that strong.
They had wanted to put in that.
Yeah.
Even if it were a regular staircase, that would be slightly more inviting than probably the way. All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the insight today. And I, and I do want to echo our appreciation for the Friends of BB for all the great work that you guys do. We certainly are glad to have your partnership, and I, you know, don't want to speak for the Board of Library Trustees, but I, I'm sure that they also appreciate the support. So appreciate your time tonight, and also appreciate your patience as we bounced around a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We hope to hear something back from you positively.
Thank you. So continuing to bounce around, since we are on, on the topic of occupancy, let's go to eight, I'm sorry, item 7C before going back to 7A. So Mr. Mayo, I don't know if this is you or Mr. Conway on this topic.
No, I can, I can give you a presentation on this. Anyways, the, the chair requested that, you know, decided to be put on the agenda so we can really begin discussing the potential use of the second and third floor, or the third and fourth floor of the senior center, depending on your orientation, for potential town use. Because I will say that currently, we are bursting at the seams at Town Hall. We often don't have, for different departments, private spaces for sensitive conversations, which is an issue with particularly Health and Human Services. We also have trouble finding spaces for new hirees. I need to, you know, move some people around here and there. And, you know, we may have some as we grow over the next few years. And I would say for us too, storage is an issue. We do put some items in the basement of Town Hall, which is, does have an elevator. There's a little harrowing and dank. And we have some things at the, at the basement of Five Common that does not have an elevator. So that's all, you know, schlepped by us, I guess, including me. So elevator and accessibility is an issue. So looking around at, at spaces that may be used for a number of items. You know, we have, you know, looked at the senior center, it is a building we own, which is nice. It is a building that does have parking, doesn't have a lot of parking, but does have adequate parking. It does have an elevator, which is quite wonderful, that that elevator goes, you know, all the way from the ground in the back of the building, all the way up to the, again, third or fourth floor, depending on your, your orientation. From there, I'd say it's the fourth floor. So we have thought about, or I've thought about, you know, what could we, what, how could we utilize that, that space? And I think that it may be a good location for the Health and Human Services Department for a number of reasons. One, the building is much better than where they are over at Five Common. There are a lot of synergies with the council on aging and the veterans. And I think it's important that we can kind of go where our constituents are. And the veterans are there, and of course, our, all the folks are there. It has a great space for vaccines and health clinics and things like that, getting people there. That seems to have worked out good. So that's kind of what I'm thinking. Does that clear up some other space at Five Common? I think that's really part of a larger conversation of what we want to do with all of our town buildings, Five Common being one of them, because that building will need an elevator at some point, and I'm not sure if it's worth that. So really, what, you know, what I'm looking forward, when we look at all of our properties, the Herd School, Butler Ave, we have Five Common, what should be our big game plan here? So what I'd love to hear from the, from the town council is, we've done a little bit of work. We've done a kind of a, kind of a, you know, kind of a back of the envelope, what it would cost to renovate the two floors of the, the senior, of the senior center. That does not include any office breakups. So office breakups would be, or area breakups would be, or storage breakups would be separate. So I guess what I'd love the council to, to say is, why don't you spend a little bit of time, because I will have to assign Joe's people, or we may have to get someone in to do it, and really give us a breakup of how this would work? Because different uses are going to require different things. If we do move our Health and Human Services over there, a couple of things are going to happen. We're going to have to put in some more, and it's all plum, there's water there. We're going to have to put in some sinks for the nursing stations and areas like that. I'd also put in a generator there, because of our keeping vaccines in case something were to happen, you know, to the power there. You know, and are there other, are there other areas that we could find? We talked to the Friends of the BB together today. Are there spaces? I'd see if we can map that out. I like the fact, I would be concerned about people going into the building on off-hours, because it is, you know, there are employees and things like that there. But I think we could, we could, we could work that out. I'm not as concerned with the Herd, although it's cold and dreary, and I get it. But here, you do have other, other things that might be of some sensitive natures in there. The other item at the senior center that I haven't talked about is that it has a wonderful fourth floor. And that fourth floor has great light, it, all has great light, it has a great stage. And I can really envision some programs being done where our seniors who are already there, maybe they're going to enjoy a breakfast, and maybe we can have them come up and really see this on the stage. It's what, a little bit up, and it really is a lot of fun. So I guess what I'd like to do to see, is there any interest in us pursuing this through the council? And then I can maybe have Joe's people do some better, you know, break that up a little bit better. I don't know if Joe's, do you have anything to add, or?
You make the question, we'll make it happen.
That's why we love, so, you know, and I can look at, at a number of things that the council wants to look at. And I would then bring in Five Common into a conversation of how we're going to use that in conjunction with Butler Ave and the Herd School. And we can talk about housing, we've talked about affordable housing, we've talked about accessible housing. Maybe these are those, we could do some of that, and Butler Ave together helps some of our seniors who want to stay in town, who don't want to go to a condo-type environment, or, you know, garden-style environment that want to stay at homes, because we've heard a lot of that. But it's all part of the big conversation, but it's apropos tonight that the Friends spoke, and then we can, can look at that, if the council is interested in it, because then we have to think about how we're going to pay for it, which is another conversation. But that's it. It's really very brief. I just wanted to get that out there and get us kind of thinking about it together. For those of you that haven't gone on a tour with or without me, we can certainly set that up, because it is, even if you've been there years ago, it's a nice thing to look at. That's really all I got to add on that.
Any comments or questions or thoughts from the council? Counselor McLean?
Steve, I want to kind of start at the beginning. My understanding, maybe a year, year and a half ago, was that the Five Common, that we were actually putting money into Five Common, including that ramp, to make it handicapped accessible.
For the first floor.
For the first floor, right. And now there are offices there, and I guess, you know, what I've indicated you in the past, and I'll say publicly, I'm curious how much, I mean, I don't see long-term huge growth in additional full-time employees in the town. Maybe I'm wrong there, but I don't necessarily foresee that. So how many offices are we looking for? You know, we don't have a schematic on, you know, what has been prepared so far. Not by way of critique, but we certainly want to know, you know, what offices do we need? Our employees, you know, many companies are sharing space. Our employees doing some work out in the field, some work from home. You know, they're hoteling, they're hoteling us.
Right.
They're telling me, they're taking my office away, they're giving me a three-by-five touch station, whatever the heck that is. I'm not saying that we need to go that route, but I would like to know, you know, what are our plans for Five Common?
I can, I can, well, we have to discuss that for the future.
Of course, of course. But what, what space do we really need? And can we, can we talk about, you know, what are the size of those offices going to be? Who's going to occupy them? What does that free us up in Five Common and/or other places? Is there overflow from Town Hall that really needs to go somewhere else into an office?
Right now, at Five Common, most of that personnel, which is Health and Human Services and the Treasurer's Office, they are not remote, particularly Health and Human Services is. Okay. The two Treasurers staff share an office now, but it is very tight quarters. And perhaps, we should go and look at those too, because I don't think we did that on the tour. We went more upstairs and looked at the empty space.
Right.
And then we went into that. So most of the people at Town Hall maybe work, maybe one day remotely. But certainly, I think there are areas we could, like my office could be cut up, but I'm not so sure if that's good for the future, personally. We also need conference rooms. I have some conference rooms. Could they be cut up? I think we need more conferences now, and we're upgrading them, because people want to come back and meet. But I can certainly give you a schematic of everybody where they work.
Because we have some shared employees too, right?
Yes, yeah. But we also have a lot of people that are based there for Health and Human Services. I also have people at Town Hall, I have an engineering department where they're all sharing little, almost like little areas that you're talking about. They have what, one, two, three, four, five, five people in a very small area? Six? Six, yeah, six.
Would you consider moving engineering too? Is that?
I mean, I think we may do some complete shuffling around to get the best bang for our buck. We do have space in the basement of Town Hall. It's not very good or aesthetic. That's a possibility, and it's being, it's, it's used by, it is used by some issues with building and storage. So we have those issues too. We noticed that at, we're putting storage at the senior center.
There's a lot of material there.
A lot of material there too.
Although, some of it you could probably just throw out.
Well, I don't know about that. They didn't want to throw in anything over there. So, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to have, I'll do a schematic of all this, and that's direction, that's, that's perfect. We've done a lot of work at Town Hall and kind of, on our own playing, how would I play musical chairs?
So I'll come back to you, Counselor, in a second, but I, I think to your question, Mr. Mayo, of is this worth looking into, it feels to me like the questions you posed, Counselor McLean, sort of go to the, yes, this is worth looking into to kind of do that.
You want to look at, you want to look at all of the areas though.
Sort of a master space plan for Town Hall and Five Common and whatever else. Sorry, Counselor Buck?
No, that's okay. I also, I feel like we should explore it. I think this is a great opportunity. There's potential in this. I think the senior center's always been kind of an underutilized, under-known building in town, and so I really appreciated it the tour. You know, this, the pricing, the proposal doesn't consider the fourth floor, and I think that is something that we should.
The second page does. There's an additional page on it, yeah.
It says third floor, but it's, it's the fourth.
It's the third, yeah.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's the second and third on this one. It depends on your.
Got it. Okay, okay. So I thought, I thought there's one more. So I think there's, I think there's really great potential. Agreeing with Counselor McLean about, you know, what you're thinking about staffing, I think that's an important thing. I think also, something that we keep on talking about is more meeting space. And I think there's, you know, that building closes up if they don't do events. And I've talked about, it's an amazing dining room in there that, you know, maybe we treat it like some of our other places that potentially people could, could rent out, just like we do the Civic Center, or, you know, we don't have enough meeting spaces. Is that a place that we do? And so I think there's potential of not only offices, but of some meeting spaces for other people from our community and our boards and committees to use. And I think, you know, in this, it's your team of office spaces also, but talking with the senior center and the Board of Health, I like thinking about the Board of Health going there as we think about of your teams that, you know, coordinate and are very constituent services facing forward. I think there's an opportunity, as we've talked about, one of our priorities has been, you know, with loneliness and depression and mental health, and, and making a true community center, that I don't think that has lived up to its potential. And, you know, we saw a glimmer of that, those of us that went to, Karen organized a great kind of Senior 101. And it was, it was great. Victor was there, others were there, and, and the seniors really appreciated it. And I felt like that was the liveliest I've actually ever, you know, one of the liveliest I've seen that building. And so I think there is such potential, and I, you know, and this is just my little, I'm going to play Counselor Julie Smith Galvin, don't let the parking be the lead, because there are, there's plenty of parking there. So that is not a reason not to have this place be a place, a destination in our town.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Danahue?
Yes. Okay, so I think we should definitely pursue it. I'm just concerned is that being at the senior center and the expansion of Health and Human Service Department, do you think that the location not being as centrally located and not being as easy to get to could be a problem?
I think that very. I think that very, no, because a lot of the seniors go there, and it's actually much more accessible at the Senior Center, because that rear entrance is much easier.
I was thinking about people who are.
Not wanting to get the micro.
No, we get micro. Most people drive, I think.
I just like, I guess I like the idea of Health and Human Services Department being close to downtown. And I think that that's a good connection. I'm not saying I'm against the senior. I have just things to think about. And then I agree with Counselor Butt that it's a great opportunity to really kind of enhance and make it a community center-type place. But I also just want to make sure that people who are not senior citizens are not going to be avoiding it because, and not thinking that they are included in this, in services for Health and Human Services, because it extends beyond just our vision of that, was beyond just elderly people. So I want to be mindful of that.
Just on Counselor Danahue's question around accessibility for Health and Human Services, our Human Services Coordinator, does, is he still doing some time at?
He does spend a lot of time at the.
At the food pantry? The food pantry. And I, I know he also just literally walks around downtown and kind of engages.
I think that would still happen.
Yeah, okay. Because I do think that's an important.
Like, yeah, private place to bring people to that, you know, if he's downtown, that he wants to have somebody visit him in their office and being close by.
Right now, that's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, it goes to the hotel, like it's the vision of the office space, because just like Counselor McLean said, most, most workplaces are going to, you kind of, you, you rent out an office or a desk. And I think, you know, I think to really think about your team as we think about who's coming in, who's, who's constituent-facing, who isn't. That would, you know, and making some space for people to have a desk and Jason has somewhere to go. I think that's important.
Right now, it's hard for Jason to meet privately with people.
Yeah.
At Five Common.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I, I understand that that was kind of the impetus too for part of this. But I, I do think the connection to downtown is important.
Thank you. Counselor Nebraska?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this, Steve. I think I echo others' thoughts that it makes sense to go forward on this. I also think we can reimagine that, just the McCarthy Center generally, and, and think of it more as, as a multi-generational center. Because there's a real value add to that. If you think about these two floors and the kind of capacity it affords us for the price point, because we already have the real estate, as compared with us having to think about constructing something like this to mirror this, it would be many, many, many times more expensive to do that. So we're taking advantage of that. But this idea of it being a multi-generational space, the, the fourth or the top floor, you know, maybe encouraging students to be able to have better access to that for various clubs or activities, or whatever the case might be, or the scouts, or whatever the case, you know. I think having the Health Department there, again, if we, if it almost gets rebranded in a way as this multi-generational space, it doesn't, it, it doesn't, it's not synonymous with someone who's elderly-only. And so youth, and, and if we're doing things like flu clinics or vaccines, or whatever the case is, and we're encouraging people to go to, you know, this new space, the, the Five Common, from my perspective, is woefully inadequate. If you're ever in there, even like the small conference rooms, you can't even like, you have to move a chair to close a door. It feels like it's, it's terrible. It's, and so it, it, it doesn't make any practical, practical sense at all. And I think we have such opportunity here to be able to capitalize on real estate we already have for relatively, you know, small money to be able to do it.
You know, I, I spoke with the former company that managed Five Common for the town for years. And the owner related to me, I said, listen, I think I have these thoughts, and I just want to pick your brain. I want to do with Five Common. And he said, knock it down. That was his advice. I said, well, I'm not we ready to do it. Knock it down.
I mean, there's a lot of issues there. Let's face it, long-term certainly. And also, we just don't have the, the meeting or the, the community space currently. We just don't. When you think about, okay, we're gonna have a meeting, where are we gonna have it? Well, we think about maybe Town Hall, right? Maybe second floor of Town Hall, first, first and second floor. And that's, that's about it. Or oftentimes here in the studio, and like, why are you having just a meeting in a, in a television studio? Because it's, it's one of the few spaces we have in town where you can do such things. So the idea of, even if it ends up being some flex space where we can use it for different purposes, FinCom could meet there, but also there could be, you know, a youth performance practice or something. I don't know, you know, it, it allows flexibility that, that I think we could really leverage with existing real estate.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think you have your marching orders. I'm gonna add one thing to that, which is, I, I think it would also be helpful. So, you know, we also do own Five Common Street. Just to get an understanding of what it would take to actually renovate that building for, you know, full accessible use throughout the building. I suspect it's gonna be a lot more than what's here.
Yes.
But I, I think just so that we have full information around, you know, the, the costs and opportunities in the spaces we have, if, if that could be part of, you know, your homework and Mr. Conway's homework, I think that'd be helpful too.
We can do that. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate the, the feedback on this, and we'll, we'll hear from you probably in a couple of months, Mr. Mayo and Mr. Conway.
Thank you.
All right, at long last, we are going back to Item 7A, the Bike and Pedestrian Plan. So Mr. Renaud and Ms. Kukindar, are you two presenting on this one? Thank you for your patience.
All right, so good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. Thank you so much for having us here again tonight to discuss our Bike and Pedestrian Plan. Really, we're using this meeting, Bill and I, to just give you an update since the last time we met on July 10th, which I can't, I can't believe it was that long ago at this point, on some updates that we've made to the plan, which you have received based on comments and feedback that we received at that meeting and after. And so I'm gonna be super quick. You all should have received the plan. I want to be kind of upfront with you. We understand that there's some grammatical errors that still need to be addressed. We understand that some of the figures don't align properly with what is in the actual plan. That is, things that are being worked on. Some of the footers to May say June, because we've done a few updates now. So we, we are aware of all that. We are going to make sure that that looks presentable, you know, hopefully this week. So I just wanted to put that out there kind of from a stylistic point. Some of the changes that we've made since July, we are just being more consistent in the, the use of certain language. This includes, I know sometimes they're calling it Wakefield, sometimes they're calling it Town of Wakefield. And so we made sure they went back and reviewed that. We made some grammatical improvements, like incomplete sentences, making, I said, the footers reflect the right month and year. And just want to, again, reiterate, the figure numbers will be all sorted with the links. I know some of the links weren't working as well. We also added two meetings that, for the Town Council, we address how we're doing engagement. And we mentioned our July 10th meeting now in the plan, as well as this meeting, how we presented to you guys both the plan then and an updated plan now. I know it was important for everyone that we address, everyone, but I know it was discussed bringing up the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting that we attended, Bill and I and our consultant back on June 24th of 2022, and their feedback and recommendations that they provided. As you'll see in some of the language there, it's a very quick overview. We didn't really feel between Bill and I, we had to get into the weeds about that. You know, what was discussed, we think they gave us initial feedback, where we need to go from there, and it's something we'll revisit with the Traffic Advisory Committee as these recommended projects come forward. I think a big thing that was discussed too at the last meeting, and I know Bill will talk more about this, and I'd be amiss if I didn't mention it, is the whole Main Street area and the idea of parking. I know initially the plan said the removal of parking completely on Main Street to accommodate the 12-foot wide path, as well as bike accommodations. We did add language about doing a multi-season parking study in the, in the plan now. So we have some data to back us up when we do make the decision of what parking shall be removed, if removed from that area. And so that will all be data-driven and will not just make assumptions. So we made sure we added language on that. I'm gonna kind of hand it over to Bill, and he'll add anything that I kind of forgot.
No, I, I think all that's great. The only thing I would just bring up again is that we have a plan. So, you know, we haven't gone into the weeds on all of the designs. There's 46 projects identified in the plan. We're not gonna go through and, you know, survey and do our due diligence that I do for any design projects. We're gonna do that when we have funding, and we're moving forward with that, that street. I would envision that our roads program, as that's pretty well-funded currently, as we continue doing different streets, we'd incorporate the recommendations into those plans to the maximum extent that we can. I can tell you already, in looking at a few of them on streets that we're working on currently, that we couldn't do all of the recommendations that were there. We've done the most amount that we can. So I would anticipate the same thing happening on every project, to be honest with you. So that's, that's kind of the quick, quick and dirty overview. I think we'd be happy to answer questions, if there's any other clarifications that we can provide. I think our intent would be to, to make public the current draft, or at least the finalized, updated draft.
Yeah, we're working on a few things that were brought to our attention to hopefully have a final, not final, have a draft, pretty similar to the draft you guys have seen, just talking about the figure numbers, the footers. I don't want to promise any dates, but midweek to open it up for public comment. And then I'll have Steve, he mentioned possibly coming back here to the December meeting. So, and incorporating any, any public comment that would go to Bill and I.
Yeah, no, I, I think from a timings and process standpoint, we're certainly not considering this for approval tonight.
Yes, understood.
If we can get that published this week so that folks have an opportunity to provide comment either online or by coming to either of our next two meetings. And then, you know, depending on the nature of the comment and the comments you hear today, you know, we can look at, you know, a discussion for, you know, potential approval or potential consideration by the council in December.
Yeah, and, and any guidance on how you'd like that presented when we get the comments back to you when we come in December? We're obviously open to that feedback as well, so if you want us to go through one by one? If you'd prefer us to kind of give overarching comments?
So I would say not at, at the meeting, we would prefer that you not go through the comments one by one. But I think, I'm going to assume on the council's perspective, I think the council would probably like to see that and have the chance to read through those, but if they could be summarized for that meeting.
Of course.
Please do not read every comment that we get first.
Much appreciated on that one.
And just so the public knows too, if people are watching or watch this later recording, the plan that you all received, we were able to get, work with John to get that online, but a more updated one will be put online with the figures working by midweek, Thursday, the latest, hopefully.
Great. Like to open up for questions or comments from the counselor, Counselor Danahue?
Yeah, I just have a question in terms of the presentation of the material, because it is very dense, and I don't know how many people are actually going to spend the amount of time that's required to read through this and to really understand it. I found it confusing to understand, like, what's gonna, what is the priority? It talks about the priority projects and vaguely, but then what specifically are we talking about? If it could just be a clear PowerPoint that maybe MAPC could do about, here's the plan. Here's, you know, just organize it as, here's an introduction of what this is. What is the goal, what are the goals of it? What's the impetus around it to connect the greenway? And then kind of action steps, like here are piece, different project pieces. Here's the priority areas connecting to schools, to recreational areas. Something that could be more digestible, because I think that this is not, this, we want to make this as readily available to our residents at all, all education levels, all, you know, people, it's, I think it's too dense and too bureaucratic as written.
Well, we, I'm, I'm thinking now, I'm looking at this PowerPoint now, and Bill and I can talk about it. The presentation that we gave to you guys back in July, kind of goes step by step of, you know, how this all came to be, the key goals, and then it highlights that spreadsheet that everyone was keen on, but kind of those projects, as well as how we look at evaluating certain projects.
And I think that that, that might be something that should be kind of the lead on it, is like, here's this, and then if you want this deeper level.
So we've received many different comments on formatting, to be honest with you. We've reformatted it, I think, at this point, three or four times.
Well, that's not a lot, so that's.
I would say for full reformatting, looking at like changing sections.
Totally changing everything.
I, I would say that's a little, that, that's probably one too many, to be honest with you. But we're, we're happy to do that. I guess I, I'd need probably a little bit more guidance from you on what exactly you're looking for, because from, you know, obviously we've been reading this report multiple, multiple times. So in my opinion, all the information's there.
It is there. Oh, it is there in detail. It is there in detail. My, my, my concern is, is that people are not going to read it, because it's too dense. And so just to really simplify, to give an, to give an executive summary.
Yeah, okay. So we could add an executive summary if that's the request. I mean, I think that's pretty straightforward and pretty easy to do.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's just kind of understanding what is the, what are the goals and objectives? Where are the priorities? What's likely to happen? You know, so that the public has an understanding, and it's not just gonna be people, you know, making assumptions about what this is or is not.
Yeah, and, and again, though, we don't go into the weeds on every single project.
I don't want you to go into the weeds. I don't want you to go into the weeds. That's what I'm telling you, is don't go into the weeds.
Okay.
It's to give an overview, like what are the priorities, so.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And if I could add to that, I think if you do an executive summary, I think making the point, and you highlight this, I can't actually see the page number on my screen, but. 28, thank you. You do highlight what this is and what this isn't. This isn't intended to be a, you know, shovel-ready set of plans for any particular initiatives or something that, you know, gives you an engineering document to go out and, you know, break ground tomorrow. This is really something that sets out kind of priorities and guidance for how we think about any number of projects that are coming through. And I think that's an important point, if you do an executive summary, to make sure that we hit on that. Because I do think, you know, Counselor Danahue, to your point, this is a dense document, and, you know, people kind of fixate on a detail sometimes without seeing the larger picture. And I think it's important that we make sure that we highlight that.
Sure.
Sorry. Counselor Smith Galvin?
No, you, you answer my question.
Counselor Nebraska?
I think something you said was, was actually really important here, and how this came to be. And I think a lot of people are saying, well, where did this come from? And it, it, it sounds as if this has been kind of like hoisted onto us by the MAPC, from, from my perspective. I know that they've been working kind of head and glove with this, and they, obviously, this, basically the state agency has, has an interest in, in advancing a certain agenda on cities and towns. I think that's fair to say, Greater Boston, what, 101 communities, I think it says, are covered under the, the domain of jurisdiction. And so I, I guess my broader question is, why do we need like a 60-page document with, you know, that touches on potentially, you know, 46 different projects that will really be, you know, handled, at some point in time potentially, potentially not? Because I think about the incredible work, Mr. Renaud, you do on an ad hoc basis. So when we're talking about things like, like Flora Way, for instance, the bathrooms, for instance. When we identify as a council or as a community needs that arise, I think you and your team do an incredibly effective job at taking the project as it is and then making determinations. And this, to me, sounds like we're losing a certain level of, of autonomy here by instead having the state come in, kind of set this, 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 these are the rules to play by. And then suddenly, we saw it even tonight, because the policy we enacted last year, the council did, and I objected. But the fiscal policy ended up being, you know, Counselor McLean said, well, that, you know, to your point, that's the policy now of the council. And so we're creating these kind of, I think, unnecessary rules and requirements and mandates and limitations that, that then opened the door for application towards every subsequent project that we do. And I don't think we need to do that. I think what we need to do is be thoughtful and smart about what the priorities are of the town. We've heard about connectivity, we've heard about sidewalks, you know, we've heard about multimodal transportation, all those sorts of things. And then I think if and when the opportunity arises for a particular project, then it, it would be appropriate to look at that project and apply the appropriate set of criteria that meet that particular project as compared with a one-size-fits-all 60-page manifesto of this is how things should be done, work within this engineering department, economic development, etc. So I, I guess I'm at a lost understanding that, that the need for this.
Yep, so, so this is kind of the way I look at this. So, so the council has approved a complete streets policy that requires us to look at, you know, bike-imped accommodations on every roadway. For me to do that ad hoc for every project, as we're doing currently, you know, we have a $10 million bond for roadways, it's very difficult for us to have to do that analysis on every single street, every single time. So the way I've envisioned this, and this is kind of how I've been steering MAPC, is to give us the overarching locations where we want to have some type of accommodation, so I can focus my energy there as I'm doing my plan developments for each annual paving bid and projects that I do. So it, I mean, this is a kind of a council thing that came through. It's a policy that you needed to adopt at the time to open us up for, for transportation funding on multiple different levels. So that's very important there. And then as I'm spending. And then as I'm spending local monies, you know, if we want to advance some of these initiatives, we want to, I want to know that we have a set of locations that I need to be paying attention to so that every single street in the town is not a, because obviously every street in town is not a priority for this, right? I think everyone would agree on that. But we would like to definitely know where they are, and that's what MAPC really helped us do, to identify what corridors that you'd want to use to get from A to B. And we had them look at locations, we had them look at walkability, bikeability, to parks, to, you know, municipal facilities, to all those types of things. So, you know, but what route would you go? How would you get in between them? That's what, that's what all of this plan did. You know, so it's really helping me in my, my work, that's what this is for. I mean, I appreciate all the kind words, I like to think my team does a great job, but, you know, it's good to have an idea of where I want to be focusing the energy. Just focusing it on the entire town, it's just, it's not sustainable for us.
But can you have this in the background? I mean, why do we have to have some sort of regimented, you know, set of policies and plans to tell you how to do your job? Can you just have, they've done the work, they've helped to identify some areas of opportunity, and you're, that's obviously guiding your grant submissions and prioritizing of projects going forward, but it just seems like this is overly prescriptive. And I think it sets a certain, it has a certain bend to it, I would say, and I don't know that that's necessarily reflective of the community consensus on this.
Okay.
So if I could maybe jump in on this one, and this is just me speaking as an individual councillor, my preference is that, and, you know, I'm not going to speak to any specific thing in the plan, and I think I would expect that over the next couple of weeks and the next month or so that the council and the public will share feedback and there may be changes that made. But I do think that it is important for us as a council to vote on the direction that we were, we are giving to the engineering office in terms of priorities. Again, I'm not arguing on any specific thing in here, and I think that's kind of, excuse me, what I would expect, you know, all of us to kind of come back to Aaron and to Bill on over the next several months, next several weeks in terms of, you know, what in here we think is reasonable, what in here, in here might need to be changed. But I do worry about the accountability of having something that sort of sits in the background that drives Bill's work rather than something that we explicitly acknowledge and discuss as a council. So just on that issue, I just want to be mindful, again, speaking just by myself as a councillor, the in-the-background pieces is a little concerning for me. Sorry, Bill, I didn't mean to interrupt you guys.
And Bill, I want to speak for you, but I would like to chime in this, we're going on three years of working on this project and I understand where you're coming from, you know, they're a state, they work closely with the state, but Bill and I have been really honestly working very closely with MAPC to draft this. We've put in a lot of hard work, the two of us too, so it's not just MAPC saying, this is what you need to do. We've looked and spent a lot of time at looking at this plan day in, day out to make sure that it does work for the community. So I just wanted to note that too, that this wasn't just given to us saying that this is what everyone's doing. We've spent a lot of time making sure that it makes sense. And some people may not agree with that, and I totally understand, but we, this is a bike and pedestrian plan, we're supposed to be making improvement for bike and pedestrians, and so that's what we're concentrating here.
But I guess that's what I'm getting at, like, at whose direction is that, is that what you're supposed to be doing? You know, like, that's where, that's where my, that's where I think the rub is here. There's a, there's a presupposed notion that this is intended to enhance, you know, cycling at the compromise potentially of multimodal or vehicular traffic. And I look at someplace like Malden, for instance, that has been quite aggressive in their dedicated bike lanes and even bus lanes for that matter, and they've had considerable community pushback on that because of what they've been doing. In fact, there's been talk about removing some bike lanes and some, I'm sure you're aware of that.
And I think we don't want to get to that point.
Right.
So that's one of the reasons that it, so how do I want to say this? Any project that's within this, this plan that has substantive changes, so I'm not, and we talked about this at the first meeting that I was here, line painting that doesn't have an impact to anybody that is on a, you know, an arterial road, we would probably move forward with. But a project that would have a removal of parking, for example, that would come back before you. Certain sections in the plan were recommended by MAPC. A great example would be Main Street and Greenwood, where all of those businesses have very small amount of parking. We pushed back on that and said, I don't think that's an appropriate decision right there, and we would, I think we need to find another location to get from A to B, which is in that plan. So they went into more side streets and low-volume roads to make that happen. So, you know, we, Aaron and I, I really believe have looked into the majority of these issues, but obviously anytime we would go into designing and getting into a project that would have substantive changes like you're talking about, it's coming before here, before the board. And the board essentially has given us the direction previously by having the complete streets policy. So that's what, that's what's driving all of this, in my mind. This isn't starting from, you know, just from scratch. If the policy wasn't agreed to by the board or by the council, we wouldn't be having this conversation, in all likelihood. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have recommended moving forward with it, but I'm recommending moving forward it now so I have an idea of where I should be looking to install these enhancements. So it's not everywhere in town, and if we don't make decisions where we're removing, you know, parking in areas where, you know, it's really needed and there aren't other alternatives, and I, because I'm not, I'm not supportive of that. I mean, we can't be putting businesses, you know, businesses out of business because, you know, we're putting in a bike lane for that. That to me doesn't, that doesn't hold any merit, at least to me.
I totally agree with you, but I think to your point, the example you just gave just kind of like highlights the fact that MAPC has a different agenda, I think. And so when you're saying you're having to push back on MAPC to try to preserve parking within a commercial district within our town, the Greenwood, I think that that indicates to me, all right, well, the bend isn't, okay, well, let's just look at this open, you know, from an open kind of holistic manner, let's look at all the ways in which we can try to eliminate the vehicular focus and expand the bicycle and, I guess, rolling focus, I guess it's called. But I've not seen anything, we're talking about you being data-driven, I've not seen anything that even talks about how many, how many bicycles or how many cyclists we have passing down any thoroughfare, you know.
They don't look at it that way, they look at it, if you build it, they'll come.
Yeah, but we, but we have, we have built it, I mean, like.
There are data that says that if you build the accommodations for the bicycles, that they will use it.
And I just want, this is also a pedestrian plan. I think we get so bogged down on the biking, and I'm not speaking out of turn with you, but it's just like, we keep talking about the biking. I mean, there's some improvements in here that widen sidewalks where they're desperately needed to be.
Which is great.
Which is great.
Of course.
And so I don't want to lose sight on that, and I feel like we always go down this biking path, so I just want to make sure that we can continue to consider that as well. But that MAPC thing.
Maybe taking it up a level, right? Would it make sense for us to come in with each individual project, lay it out and say, here are some of the pros and cons, and do you want to leave this in the plan or remove it?
So I would maybe, to that point, I would maybe ask that, again, us as a council, if there are individual, if there's individual feedback on projects that are referenced in the plan, if we could collect that and share that with you guys so that as you are working on the next iteration of that.
We can be prepared.
You know, we can identify, and then perhaps when you come back to us, if you could highlight, you know, we heard from a number of members of the public and a number of member of the councils that, you know, what you're suggesting for, I'm just going to make something up, you know, Prospect Street doesn't make sense. Just to, again, try to focus it because I think there is a lot here and.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, yeah.
What I don't want you to have to do is to go through sort of 46 projects with us if like 40 of them are things that, you know, adding sidewalks on the hot street, you know, things that I think there's probably broad support for. So maybe if I could give us as councillors some homework to maybe take some time over the next couple of weeks to do that and feed that feedback to Bill and to Aaron, I think that would be helpful.
That would be great.
Councillor Smith Galvin.
Sure, thanks for coming back. I know how hard you've worked on this, and it's not surprisingly, I don't agree with some of my colleagues on this. I, to say that the MAPC or the state is pushing an agenda, it's just feeding into this, us versus them, this is not a cars versus bikes versus pedestrians. We are trying to get to a point, and we have been told by our constituents in the master plan, in the vision, by electing the complete streets, by selecting and wanting to move forward the complete streets, that this community cares about biking, and we care about, about rolling, you know, biking and pedestrians, and we, of course, we have to get around in cars, all bicyclers have cars, all walkers have cars. Though I might say that, you know, this build it and they will come, I understand why people might have some concerns about that, but study after study shows that. And when you look at Wakefield, we have a population of 27,000 people in our last consensus here. We have 22,000 cars registered in this town, and actually it's going down by about 1% a year. So right there, we have 20%. 80% of people have a car, assuming one-to-one, but 20% of people don't. A lot of those are our kids, there are middle schoolers who are looking for some autonomy. I've heard from parents who want their kids to be able to go out and experience this community, but they are fearful for their lives. And so this is not, please, I beg my colleagues, not to make this an us versus them, not to make this an agenda. I just searched it, not one place in this entire plan doesn't use the words, rules, mandates, limitations, manifesto. Every single place in this plan says, these are best practices, this is what we recommend. We want you to use contextual basis to design it. So Bill and his group, as opposed to just going on an ad hoc basis when some funding comes down the pike and stopping and saying, what can we do? This gives us, you know, no pun intended, but a roadmap, or a bike map, or a pedestrian map, for him to say, what is that, you know, can we use that funding? How can we use it so that vehicles can have their space? There's a saying in kind of this world that when you share the road, when everybody has a share of the road, you, you know, everybody has their share, we can share better. You know, the gentleman who spoke this morning, you know, vehicles are aggressive to bicycles. And councillor Nebraska, I'm sorry, we have not built out any bike infrastructure. We have maybe one mile of road that, perhaps three miles of road around the lake that has sharrows painted on them. And I will tell you, I feel safer when I get to those because at the very least it indicates to the drivers that I have a right to be in the road. So I really implore my colleagues not to make this a political, an agenda, a manifesto. These are recommendations that will be there when complete streets monies come, when safe streets school, which we've been a member of in this community since 2008, and we have lots of examples where this is what the community wants, and this is the guidebook that will get us there.
Thank you councillor. Other comments, councillor Vincent?
Thank you Chair Chines. As you both know, I've spent an awful lot of time on this bike plan. I think very highly of your work. You do know I proofread it, I gave you guys 30 to 40. It's not funny. I gave you guys 30 to 40 grammatical incomplete sentence, misspelled words. And you've made most of those changes, and I am glad to hear that you're going to continue to fix some of the ones I also identified, that the figures are still off. But as I said to you on an email and to Steve, I do believe we need a townwide bike plan. I've spent many, many hours on this plan, but I still have procedural and substantive issues that concern me. And I'll just briefly go over the procedural issues. I did some research last night and I looked at the MDOT, or Massachusetts Department of Transportation, has a 2019 Municipal Resource Guide for Bikeability. This is a guide for towns that are going to implement a plan like this. And in relevant part, it says, in engaging stakeholders, that internal stakeholders should include, among others, planning, public works, public health, law enforcement, emergency responses, and other municipal departments. One of the things that has concerned me from a procedural standpoint on this project is three aspects. The Traffic Advisory Committee, yes. MAPC, and you went to the Traffic Advisory Committee in June of 2022, but a written policy was promulgated in July 23. Then there was a new version in October, late October, because the one I looked at was put on Govanta on October 25th, and now there's the one that's labeled November. I'm a little bit befuddled that MAPC and town officials haven't gone back to the TAC with the updated version because what they looked at in June 2022 is far different than what's, what we have before us now. Secondly, I don't think the police and fire department personnel, the chiefs, have been brought into the most recent plan. I know this definitively because I talked to Chief Scory over the last week. When I started to look at this, and I gave you guys my comments on October 30th, I called Chief Scory up, since I'm the liaison of the police department, I asked him if he had seen the most recent version. He had not. He had Lieutenant Anderson contact you, Bill, you asked Aaron to give it to Lieutenant Anderson, I then asked Chief Scory to look over my comments and to give me any feedback, which he did, but he has not been asked for any feedback from town officials. This is what he told me this afternoon. I don't know whether the fire chief has, I'll defer to councillor McLean on that, but to me, they are, and it's not just to me, I want to follow the guidance from the state, the Commonwealth, and the Commonwealth tells me that we should be involving law enforcement and emergency responders in looking at this plan. For me to make a fully informed decision as a member of the town council concerning this plan, I personally need to hear from the subject matter experts. I would be expected in the due course of business at some point in time, the fire chief and the police chief would be sitting where you two are sitting right now, having a robust discussion with us concerning this plan. Especially when I read some of the stuff that Chief Scory sent to me, it's very relevant, it's very important. So those are my procedural problems with where we are right now on the bike plan. On the substantive issues, I'm not going to talk about right now about the Mystic Highlands Greenway and the Main Street side of the lake, I'll defer to councillor McLean on that. But I will talk about the parking issue on the Main Street of the lake. And I put, I said this to you all in my comments, and I said this in my email. Where I find this document ambiguous and confusing is, for instance, there are three examples of where the Lakeview Loop is mentioned in the current document, pages 33, 42, and 49. On 33, the discussion addresses the benefit of construction of a 12-wide-foot path around Lakeview. On page 42, in a declaratory statement, it says, quote, "The overall goal of the lake loop is to construct a 12-foot wide paved path completely around the lake." Only on page 48 is there a recommendation for a parking study. I find that ambiguous and confusing. The gentleman that spoke earlier tonight in public hearing said, "I want you all to adopt this plan in a total," which included, in his mind, eliminating all the parking around the lake. He said that because it's very confusing that in three different parts in this document, it says three different things. The other thing concerns me is the parking study, and Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong. There's no guarantee a parking study will ever be conducted. Because don't we have to go to town meeting in May to get funding for the parking study?
We do, but I would say I'd be more concerned about the 3.5 million that we need to build the project. I mean, at the $40,000, I mean, I'll roll that into the cost of the project, I mean, that's pretty much.
But the earliest that we could do a parking study, the year, and I agree with you in a year-long parking study, but the earliest that could commence would be May of 2024. Is that right?
Yeah, unless, unless I'm instructed to use other funds.
Right.
So just on that, so the earliest that could commence if we were allocating tax dollars to that.
Correct.
But if you got other grant funds or anything else to do that, obviously that's a different story.
All of those would be other options, or from, again, if it's identified as a priority for me to move forward with as, say, the number one priority to look at.
Sorry, just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Then I'd be looking in that timeframe. Right now, I, we don't have the 3.5 billion additional funds, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking forward to, I'm not looking to move that forward right now.
I mean, I promised that I would look at this thing, and I really went through it long and hard, and I've done the additional research. But notwithstanding all of the efforts I've done on this, and I'm trying to get there, I'm just telling you right now, from a procedural and a substantive standpoint, I am not there. I know a lot more than I knew a few weeks ago, but I'm still not there for the reasons I delineated briefly tonight, but more specifically in the track changes I made on the document as well as the email that I forwarded to you and the town administrator. So I will continue to work with you on this over the next few weeks, but I just wanted to lay out, especially the procedural thing, the fire chief and the police chief coming and talking to us, that's an absolute for me. I need to hear from the law enforcement and the emergency responders who are not mentioned in the current plan, and like I said, I talked to Chief Scory and he was not asked, has not been asked, except by me, to look at the most recent iteration of the plan. That's all I have.
I would say that as a, you know, also, I would say that, you know, Joe delineated, you know, assigned me to do the work at the Traffic Advisory Committee, just like Scory, you know, has Lieutenant Anderson as his liaison or his person as the chair. So I'm happy to talk to Lieutenant Anderson and with Chief Scory if need be, and I can also.
I think the point I'm making is, I want us to have, I want the town council to have the opportunity to talk to Chief Scory and Chief Sullivan. To me, in order to make a fully informed decision, I want to have a Q and A, just like MDOT tells, tells me that we should be doing in this 2019 municipal. like MDOT tells me that we should be doing in this two thousand and nineteen municipal resource guide for bikability. I wanted to see what the Commonwealth had to say as to how municipalities should handle these kind of plans. That's why I did that additional research.
Okay.
So, that's what I'm looking for.
You're in the crystal clear. All set councillor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLean?
Do it sounds like you guys are getting a little tired of this plan.
Yeah.
I'm going to tell you though.
Do you mind time being spent on it? Yeah.
I'm going to tell you, so am I.
Right, yeah.
I mean, as you know, I do review these page by page, and a couple hundred plus on the master plan, which is not ready for prime time. And now we're into another iteration of this. Is the most recent iteration more you and Aaron, or is it, is there any MAPC in here, or did they?
Most of the iterations at this point, we're taking the leads on.
Based on comments.
On comments that we're receiving.
Right.
So, the big add from the last meeting would have been the comment on the multi-year parking study from what I heard at the last meeting from you folks. So, that would be my, that was my main addition to this.
And I'm just going to point out a few things that I think are not entirely consistent in the document.
Sure.
The first thing I want to point out, though, is that after the weekend Veterans Day ceremony, I did talk with Senator Lewis, and Senator Lewis indicated, and this is not a surprise to me, that this town council, that every town council is responsible for what they decide to do relative to either the MHG or the Bright Line Plan, that it is our decision collectively. But I noticed that, I believe it was on around page thirteen, that there was a statement that no pedestrian fatal or cyclist non-fatal as of from nineteen to twenty-two was on the main street along the lake, but previous to that, there was a more broad statement saying a number of locations have recently experienced bicycle and pedestrian crashes, particularly along Main Street in North Ave. And I'd say, you know, I'm data-driven, and I don't see the data, and I think even the public comment we had tonight was, oh, I don't believe we haven't had an accident on that side of the lake. I don't see one in the plan.
There was a map that identified.
Yes, and there were dots, there were dots on Main and Church, there were dots, there was the fatal, of course, on North Ave, and I don't think you'll see one between Lowell and Church on Main. I didn't see one.
You're saying fatal or just accident?
Either. I don't, I didn't see a dot.
Okay.
From Lowell to Church until you got to one at Main and Church. But beyond that, you know, I know the MAPC did a couple of site visits, but some of us have been rolling around that lake one way or another for thirty-plus years, so, you know, I don't see to them any greater knowledge of the lake than we all have. And I'm not being political. The three hundred and sixty survey responses, you know, yep, there were that, but, you know, that's not to me representative of the entire community, and the entire community is now looking at these plans. I had significant concerns, which is why I asked that we print the Greenway, because it certainly seemed to me when I got to pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine, and I think you confirmed it, that the lake, that the lakeside loop is part of the Greenway.
Yep.
But the picture of the Greenway.
Yeah.
Does not show it as part of the Greenway.
Yeah, so what I've found is that.
I mean, you may be culling it in or pulling it in from some other locale, be it this Bright Line, which if you go to their website, is a picture of Wakefield. I mean, it doesn't really give any details. Picture of Wakefield shows the.
Right, so just to, so a couple of talking points on what you mentioned. So, what I was finding is that the maps weren't being updated with comments that we were providing. So, that had, you know, I had noted it to be done, you know, identified maybe one section, said, listen, I saw this, double-check all the maps, that didn't quite happen. So, we're going through all of those to make sure that all of our comments are carried through on all the maps that are, various maps that are in there.
Right, and this narrowing of Main from thirty-two to thirty-eight feet to twenty-four, or perhaps even, I think you might have said, could be eleven and eleven, or twelve and twelve.
It could be, yeah, yeah.
That is, that is extremely narrow around the cove bend, you know, you could have fire trucks, which are about eleven feet wide, as I understand it, you know, traveling at higher rates of speed, you know, on a call. And I did speak as liaison, I did speak to Chief Sullivan a week ago Sunday, and he told me that he hadn't, he wasn't in favor of that narrowing, and he hadn't been contacted.
Okay.
So.
But we're not designing the project, though. So, if I was designing the project and narrowing it down, I would be talking to him about that. Again, looking at areas to concentrate on for future projects, that's what we're trying to do.
If it really is prioritization, obviously, I've always said, we don't even have a charol going down to Greenwood, seems to make sense to me that that's a cheap and a way that councillor Smith Galvin indicated that people can know, you've got a right to the road, and to me, that would be a priority, and that links right up to said Greenway. When it comes to seasonal traffic, or not traffic, seasonal parking study, that is going to cost, yes, less than the project itself, you know, it's been some months now that I've been, you know, pretty clear to those of us that have talked, that I don't see that as changing my opinion. And I believe that the location of this Wakefield Loop, I don't know where that came from, I don't know what it is, but I've looped that lake for thirty years. I don't see a big problem on that side of the road. I've indicated that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I don't think, I don't know whether you're, would you intend to put up, you know, posts along the entire length of that, some, what, mile long street?
Those are design details, though, again, right?
Okay.
So, I would say, but if you're asking my opinion, I didn't propose them in North Ave, the council asked me to add them in. So, if that happened again, then I would add them in. If you don't want them, I will not put them.
Well, in terms of priority, I don't favor a long-term seasonal parking study. I don't think, I think I know what it would ultimately show. There would be some kind of, you know, trade-off between removing a certain number of parking spaces and leaving a certain number of parking spaces. I think we all suspect that's what it would show. It would indicate a cost. I personally don't think that, I want the town to incur that time delay or cost, and I also do not believe that that portion of what's called the Wakefield Loop, which I think is in blue on the map, between Lowell and Church, that should be part of this bike pet plan. So, I would move that, to help you with your priorities, I would move that we eliminate the Wakefield Loop part of the bike plant from Lowell to Church, and that we instruct the town employees and the town engineer not to conduct a multi-season parking study. That's my motion.
Can you clarify, what do you mean by remove? Are you saying to remove any reference to Main Street between Lowell and Church from the dock? Help me just understand exactly what you mean by remove.
The, I don't think there's a problem with, with a serious problem from the data that we've been given in terms of safety. I don't believe, I believe that the charol over there is working. I don't believe that narrowing that road is a good idea. I think it's a, that's a safety issue as well. I think, as I say, I think it is okay as is, and it should be pulled out of the bike pet point.
So, in its entirety, including the sidewalk work, is that the motion?
Well, if the sidewalk work is going to involve a designated bike lane, then.
Doesn't have to.
We don't know yet.
We, it doesn't have to.
Then, then I can modify the motion to say that I move that we do not engage in a parking study, multi-season parking study, and that we leave the current charol and the parking as is on Main Street between Lowell and Church.
So, just to clarify again, so.
I thought that was pretty clear.
Well, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue it. I am trying to get clarity, because I think this goes to sort of the design question where there's a lot going on there in terms of also recommendations around sidewalks. And so, is the, is the motion not to change the right of way in its entirety, not to change the street footprint? And I'm going to actually ask Bill if you could kind of help me out in terms of defining how these may sort of work out, just in terms of giving you clarity around what the motion might entail.
If all the parkings proposed to stay, then that, that does, that limits certain things that I'd be able to do, but that doesn't mean that, so, basically, what you're trading off is probably the sidewalk across the street, if the council wanted to widen, to have a shared use path. If that's not the case, and they want to have the sidewalk on the other side, which we've received, you know, an earmark for, then we would, that would effectively eliminate the shared use path and the bike lane.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you saying, Bill, that you would, that you would not be able to do the sidewalks on the non-lake side of Main Street?
We would have to talk to you about the decision on what that cross-section looks like. So, whether we wanted to have the sidewalk on the other side or not, we could move the curbs to eliminate that and still fit things in and keep parking. We could do that in certain sections, which is kind of what I, as we were talking before, what I would envision ends up happening, is that it's going to be a hybrid of all of these different things, and we're going to pick and choose sections with different cross-sections. That's what I would envision us getting to at some point, but again, I have to look into it with a lot more detail than I have. Yeah, but yeah, I mean, all of these are trade-offs, like any of these projects. I think I brought this up on Main Street before. We also have a lot of drainage improvements that we have funding for that we receive from the development. So, those all stay on hold until we figure all of these out and how we want to do it, unless it's just pulled completely, and then I'm just focusing on drainage. I mean, that's what would happen. So, I just, any of the guidance is guidance in my mind, so, I'm indifferent on it. I mean, it's, you know, I obviously don't live in town, so it's everyone's town. You tell me what you want me to build you, I'm happy to do it.
So, from a motion standpoint.
Hey, you know, a second.
Do you need a second to your vote?
Well, let's try to get the motion clear first, yeah, yeah, because Bill's throwing in other stuff about high schools, you know, or about sidewalks, yeah.
So, if you could restate your motion again, so the, so the motion, when you say to take out, the motion is to remove the parking study?
The motion would be to remove the parking study.
And any design of bike accommodations on Main Street?
Remove the parking study to remove any indication of a designated bike lane other than the one we already have, which is a charol, right? And the, to not eliminate any of the current parking.
Okay. All right, is there, Sherry, is that clear just from a minute standpoint?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Sorry.
Brian, we lost Sherry too. The screen hasn't worked.
It's blocked, yeah.
Second. Discussion. Councillor Smith-Galvin?
Obviously, I'm not in favor of this, but let me just lay out why, and there were some different reasons. First, I think, yes, this plan has been going on for a while, but we just said we're going to give the community about a month to look at it, and I think to make this decision at the town council level right now before really hearing from the community, yes, we've all received emails on both sides, but I, I think it's really fair to the community to let them be able to look at this, to hear what they've said, and then come back and debate this as a whole. And then at that point, if that's what's decided, then, you know, we'll respect the vote. I also, a couple of questions. Does this affect grant money? Like, if we were to go after highway money for this or other parts of the?
We would be able to get.
We would not, we would not qualify for grant money because the state requires us to do a design, which we have not done yet, so none of us has seen what this could look like. You know, everybody is just kind of having these worst-case scenarios. There was a study that came out, the first study ever done on pedestrian safety and road lengths, road widths came out today from the Johns, or this week from the Johns Hopkins University, and they actually found that narrower roads were safer in the thirty to thirty-five miles. So, there's, there's data out there, we haven't seen any designs, we haven't heard completely from the community, and we're putting grant money at stake. So, I am definitely voting against this motion, and I would ask, at the very least, my colleagues vote against it until we get to talk about the whole bike pet plan after public input.
Thank you councillor Benihay.
I have a question about the grant money. If we do not want to include in our plan from Lowell Street down to Church Street, we're going to lose grant money? I thought that Senator Lewis told us that we could decide how we wanted to participate.
But these are all different issues, so Senator Lewis was talking related to the Greenway, and you all are involved in the Greenway. That's sort of what's going on here, too, because we're looking at locations and how people would be connecting in different locations. Just as an aside, a quick aside, there was a grant that went forward with other sections of the Greenway that they asked Wakefield to participate in, which we said, we don't recommend it at this point until the bike and pet plan is vetted out, and everyone's in agreement on what we're looking to do. So, just as a point.
And Melrose got it.
Yeah, Melrose, and it was a successful grant to put signage in, wayfinding and all that stuff in.
And that's fine, but I'm saying is, so, if we decide, I'm not in favor of removing the parking on Main Street. I think that it's, I think that this document expressly states how much activity there is on the lake and how active it is with activities and things going on. I'm not supportive of removing parking. I'm fully supportive of biking, I'm fully supportive of this plan, but not, you know, I'm not going to pit people against each other. I think that that parking is that, I think to say that you can park on a side street negates, like, some of the challenges, the physical challenges that people have, and they have every right to be able to park and enjoy the lake. So, I'm not supportive, I'm, I think there's a lot of great stuff in this plan.
Yep.
That's the piece that I'm having a hard time with. So, you're telling me that if I vote to not to remove any of the parking, that we're now going to be losing three point five million dollars in grant funding?
Absolutely, I never said that, no. I said that you would not be able to get certain monies, that will, it will impact your ability to get different money for that stretch. So, if we would go through tip, so the tip process, we have two tip projects that we've been able to get on the state's plan, right? Both of those have to have all bike accommodations, otherwise it's not getting funded. So, you would eliminate that as a potential funding source for that stretch of road. That may be a good decision, I, it's your call.
But we could come up with other, we could come up with alternatives.
I, for funding?
No, alternative pathways.
But we'd lose the funding.
We wouldn't, we'd lose the funding.
We wouldn't have the opportunity to get the funding.
Wouldn't get the opportunity to get, like, our federal, our federal and state money for that.
So, we're getting tied to grant funding specifically for making us have a bike plan between Lowell Street and Church Street.
You're saying if you just remove that from it, if you vote to say you're never removing parking, then you're going to eliminate certain funding dollars from being able to get them. But that, those are decisions you can make. It's okay.
What's, can you just tell me what specifically, what specifically?
So, the state, so there's a state transportation improvement program and the federal transportation improvement program, and MASTDOT reviews all of those projects, right? So, similarly, we have bike, we have bike accommodations for downtown, right? That was included, and we made it very clear that if these were removed, there wouldn't, that funding would go away. And then the same thing with our, the other sections, so the rail to trail, and then how that ties into the Galvin area in front of that. The Galvin was another project that's on the transportation improvement program. So, those.
And then the connecting lake.
If you were to eliminate the bike accommodations on that, on that road, you wouldn't, you'd lose that funding too in front of the Galvin. So, it's the same idea, so you can't, if you're not providing bike accommodations, it eliminates several pots of money for the town in that stretch, not for the whole town. That's not what I'm saying.
They're project-based.
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 So, the project base from Lowell Street to Lowell Street to Church Street, where does that tie in with everything? It ties in with the rail to trail, it ties in?
It ties in with, right now, it ties in with nothing. I have not proposed, I haven't moved forward with it as an application, because I don't think that's what we would want to do. We want to be able to make our own decisions for that stretch of road.
So, we're not tied to fund, we're not tied to funding yet.
We would be able to apply for that.
Yeah, we don't have funding for what we don't.
No, I understand that.
No, but I just, I feel like we're talking about a lot of numbers, I just want to make sure we're clear.
I'm saying is that I just want to know, is what are the implications? Is it kind of, is it, is it set money that we are saying, oh, we're going to get this funding to do this? Or is it, it's just saying, like, if we don't do this?
If we don't have a bike accommodations that are in the plan, we will not be able to apply for these pots of money.
But we can have a bike accommodation plan that does not include Lowell Street to Church Street?
The bike accommodation plan doesn't, is, how do I want to explain this? Is not used, you, what you have to do is you have to, you look street by street and what you're designing for the street. So, we're doing an overarching plan.
Right.
That looks at all these different locations. That's what this is doing, right? When I get into the design levels of these projects, I have to include bike accommodations in order to get funding at the federal level and the state level. in order to get funding at the federal level and the state level. If I wanted to go and get funding for that section, if the town decides that they want to fund any improvements on that street, and we're just funding it through our bonds or its own separate bond for the project, then that would be, there's no ramification to it. But it's the town would have to front that money. Which, and I think both are okay, just to be clear. I mean, it's, it's just that's the decision that, that's being made, which is okay.
You all set, Counselor?
For now.
Okay. Counselor Dombrowski?
I think one of the things that's coming out of this, this discussion we're having is that there is a significant sensitivity to preserving the parking along the lake from Lowell to Church, right? And unlike the downtown corridor, which, as you rightly point out, we needed to have a bike accommodation there, we, we didn't eliminate all parking in order to have that happen, fortunately. And so I think bike accommodations and bike lanes are perhaps also where we're getting like a little bit tripped up, right?
I agree.
I mean, we could have, at the appropriate time, the appropriate bike accommodation that does not require the elimination of all parking along the lake. And I think that's something that we need to be mindful of. So perhaps, you know, Counselor McLean, when, how you raise it, perhaps putting it differently and saying that if, that it is the will of the majority of this council to preserve the existing parking from Lowell to Church, because that's what matters to us, I think, first and foremost. As far as the, and, and we both run it, we know, it, that Main Street, it does get narrow because you have like this, you know, like, what, two, two or three feet of like just grass that's now dirt because people walk on it, you know? So does it make sense to probably widen that at least, you know, as for most of the voters? I understand that.
That's what I was proposing. So similarly, like we did on, what I envisioned is that we would have something similar to, to North Ave.
North Ave, right.
Yeah.
So we were thinking about that. So, but again, north, the beauty of North Ave is it didn't remove any parking, you know, like there wasn't, there wasn't parking along North Ave, similar to, which I think is the major concern here. So if there's a way we can thread the needle so that we say that, you know, it is the intention that from Lowell to Church, you know, we, we are intent on maintaining and preserving the parking for the, the various reasons that we've all discussed, you know, in prior meetings and tonight too, and then we, we can build around that. And so if that means that there's a bike, bike accommodation, I don't think anyone here is saying, no bike accom, I, I have two bikes myself. I bike, but I'm not saying, I'm not saying no bike accommodations. I'm saying no bike accommodations if, if the trade-off is going to be losing 200 parking spaces. That, that to me is crazy. I don't think that makes sense. But if there's a way that we can preserve that parking and still leave the flexibility so that if and when a design, you know, project comes up, you can be thinking creatively, and maybe it can't work. I understand what, what Counselor McLean is saying about the, the fire engines, just like these, these various 40B projects and whatnot, that when we have fire and police there, their input's important. Okay, yeah, what's the radius when you're turning, and if there's ice and rain, I get that. So maybe narrowing isn't, isn't appropriate there. My biggest concern is I want to preserve those spots, I want to be able to make it so that it's, we have a better use, use path there, and whatever way you can accommodate biking, your cyclists safely, great, I don't have an issue with that at all. I just don't want to do it at the sacrifice of, of, you know, the vehicle, the parking. So if, I mean, maybe a friendly amendment is to just kind of put a positive spin in saying that, you know, it, we, we believe it's an important priority to maintain the, the park as it currently exists along that corridor, and then, then you can kind of build around that. Is that something that you guys can work with?
It definitely is. I, I also think that, yeah, I mean, I guess it, it's a decision for the council. So I mean, what would end up happening, I think there's ramifications to saying that you're maintaining all of it.
Yeah.
That would be, if I'm recommending it, I would say, give some flexibility to, one, determine how much you really need. Because I, I mean, anecdotally, I'm sure everyone's been looking at the parking out there. Right? I'm assuming everyone's been looking at it over the last few months, right?
We all have our tallies.
We all have our tallies, right? We've all done it, right? So, you know, we're seeing about 75 spaces at the max is what we've seen, but that doesn't mean that it's not used at another time when someone didn't look at it, so.
But also, it's different, people, but it's also, it's a long stretch, but it's also, people are parking in different places for different reasons. So it's not like just because of the 275 are used at any given time, it, it all depends like where they are and why they're there, and there's, there's a lot that goes, there's a lot of thought that goes into it, basically.
Right, but all of that can be worked out in a design phase. So if, if there's a stretch of 10 spots that everybody wants right in this one location across from some specific location for whatever reason that is, we can potentially make that happen. You know, it's, that's, that's why I would, I'd just be careful on saying the whole, like...
But I'm telling you that because I've heard from a number of neighbors who actually are across the street from this parking, who I assume would be the most likely to want to eliminate parking from a view perspective. They're, they've been the most adamant that they want to preserve it there because of how, how well-used it is by so many people, especially those, you know, with, those with disabilities or those that are older, I mean, and have mobility issues. So I, I'm of the opinion that if, if, if we could maybe modify the motion to say that, you know, we identify as a priority and are preserving that, that stretch from Lowell to, to Church. And then if for some reason, Bill, there's some particular project or, or, or grant that comes up and you say, hey, guys, because remember, this is supposed to be just your guidance, right? If you come to say, hey, guys, I can get this and we can make this work, except that we have to tweak this one thing for this purpose, come back to the council at that time, it could be done. But at least then, you're saying you want direction.
Sure.
And this is, I think, is the pretty clear direction going forward. So that would be my suggestion as a compromise.
Good on you. Counselor McLean?
I, I don't have any problem with compromise, Counselor Dombrowski. I would just want to say that, you know, Vision 2030 talks about more festive events, enhance our beautiful landscape, fosters community gathering, right? And the ALS Walk, not a spot available. So, you know, the buddy walk, forget the lake, not a spot on the lake, not a spot anywhere near downtown, near downtown. I mean, going all the way down the side streets. We just had 270 runners of all ages, runners and walkers, from eight to 89 for Jerry's Run of All Ages. 270, going into all the other traffic there. Foot traffic, people traffic, you know, one person with a dog in those skinny sidewalks. Yeah, I'd love to have wider sidewalks, but then the question happens, well, is, well, what happens?
Yeah, that's exactly.
You know, yeah. Everything bumps everything else. But in terms of, you know, the amount of parking on that lake, yes, there are times when you might see 30, 40 cars. But there are other times when you don't have a space.
But I also...
And we do events down there with such great regularity.
So who's to say that, that if you have the, the bike path there, that you don't allow it to be used and you shut the path down for certain events? I mean, I think you could do that too. I mean, there's, there's other, I think there's other solutions, but again, whatever guidance that I get from the council, I'm happy to, to advance. So, you know, I'm just playing devil's advocate just so you, you know, in case you didn't think of that, that's all.
So the clarification, or I guess the addition to the motion, Counselor, that Counselor Dombrowski suggested around adding language, you know...
The parking...
Adding language to preserve parking around Main Street.
Yeah, preserving parking on Main Street from Lowell to Church is, is, has been identified by the community as a high priority.
Are, is that amenable to you, Counselor?
It is.
And, and should be preserved.
Yeah, and should be preserved.
So that, that is part of the motion?
If Sherry got it.
She's much better at this than we are.
I know that, I know that, I just wanted to be sure.
Counselor Smith-Galvin and Counselor Vincent?
Um, I've already spoken of Counselor Vincent.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, I think one of the other reasons why we're here at this moment is because of the lake loop being part of the Mystic Highlands Greenway. And what's always been confusing to me is the Greenway was going up North Avenue, and originally it was gonna go around 200 Quanipawet and then go up into Reading, except that both Reading and Wakefield have now asked MassDOT to allow us to continue straight up North Avenue on Walker's Brook Drive and go right into Reading. So when I look at it and I see this is North Avenue, it's either going straight up North Avenue, the Greenway is, or it's going up around 200 Quanipawet and then into Reading. What, what confused me about the Main Street side being part of it, and, and what I was concerned about, is then we could not, maybe not get grant money because we put the Main Street side of the lake into the Mystic Highlands Greenway. And that's our choice to make that, right? MAPC did not say we had to make Main Street side of the lake part of the Mystic Highlands Greenway. That's our choice.
The intent was to get, the intent was to get it to Lake Quanipawet and they've said that they want to have it through the loop, but I will...
Who's, who's the day that said?
MAPC.
And we agreed with them.
We thought that made sense.
And where did they say that? I've never seen anything in writing from them on that.
You might not have, but I...
It was discussion.
And, and they still didn't update their, even when they made, I'm sorry, even when they mandated that or said that was required, they still didn't update their map?
They didn't, no. No. And I can tell you that I've asked for other changes.
Well, frankly, that doesn't surprise me, one of the quality of the document that they prepared for us.
But, but I will, I will say, so to answer your question though, so one of the reasons is the original plan was to have it go down North Ave because they wanted to have bike lanes on both sides. When I looked at it, we thought it made more sense to widen it into more of a shared use path, wide section, 12-foot wide, 10-foot wide section on North Ave, and then add a bike lane in the roadway based on comments that we received. So there'd be a way for some bikers to go faster, and then you have all the kids that can stay on the shared use path. Soon as that decision was made, then there was no way to go north and south on, on North Ave. So you, basically, your southern movement would be on the Main Street side for your bicycle accommodation, and your, your north movement would stay on North Ave. So if you wanted to cut to any other direction, this is providing you your north-south approach. Your east is gonna be down on Church, right? Would that be east, would that be west? Your west movement would be there, and then your eastern movement would be on Quanipawet Parkway, which we, the engineering division had the Cabot-Cabin and Forbes project include a shared, a widened shared use path, there'd be sharos that are put on there, and that's all being done as part of that project as opposed to the town funding. So that, so that's, that's, so as long as I understand what we're looking for, I can advocate to have other, other monies come in. I mean, that was a $1.7 million, you know, add-on to that project that Cabot-Cabin and Forbes agreed to do. So, you know, the, this is why these plans are just helpful for me to go out and get funds. So I hope that kind of packages everything.
That helps clarify that for me, yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Um, just one kind of factual clarification. I know that Counselor McLean said that there have been no accidents on Main Street, but it's actually tucked under one of the, you zoom in, there was one accident on Main Street. So just, I just want to be clear about that.
I think I asked about that, nobody could tell me anything about it, whether it was a bicycle accident or not.
It says, it says it was a pedestrian accident, which is not uncommon when pedestrians come out between parked cars. I am, I, I appreciate Counselor Dombrowski's amendment. I think that, I actually agree with you that I think spending money on a parking study is ridiculous. I, I think that we could sit down and come up with a design that preserves parking, you know, particularly for people in areas that are of high usage, for people who have disabilities. I, I think that, you know, reasonable people, we could save that $50,000, we could preserve probably the majority of the parking, maybe not all of it, but I, I think it's doable. But I, I will vote against this motion, and, but I do appreciate that we're softening the language on, on bikes.
Any other comments from the council? Just to add my thoughts, I, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse on this one, and, you know, I personally think that, I, I agree with Counselor Smith-Galvin, that there is a way to accommodate a lot of different needs, and I think that's what a thoughtful design process would come up with. We're kind of designing on the fly as seven individuals who are not engineers and are not designers. I personally think that it makes sense to vote no on the motion and then let the process play out, and let the engineering team do their jobs, come up with some different options, gather feedback, which is what this document envisions. And I, I go back to again on page 28, this planning process and report does not replace the need to conduct a full design and obtain public input for projects that will reallocate the roadway cross-sections, this is not talking specifically about Main Street, but in general, and include major infrastructure changes. Those significant projects must evaluate each street's unique characteristics, rights of way widths, grading limitations, utility needs, parking needs, and competing interests. I see that as an outcome of this plan if we choose to adopt it. And so I, I am concerned about hamstringing that plan in a way where we would say right off the bat that we want to preserve parking without giving the team a chance to kind of come up with some options. I'd be comfortable with saying that, I think, from a council's perspective, again, I do think that we all share the interest in preserving parking. We did that, in fact, with the envision process, where we did a parking study to determine how much parking we needed and what we could, what we could keep while still having some of the bike lanes, and I think that that was a good outcome. So I, I personally, you know, am opposed to the motion for that reason. I, I think we have to let our team do their work and make those decisions based on data and solid plans, you know, when and if we get to that point. So Counselor Danahue?
I just want to understand the process a little bit more because we will be voting on this plan. We'll be voting on the idea of a pedestrian, bike and pedestrian plan. The details of that plan, what are we voting, what will we be voting on?
Kind of like how it came in front of you with North Ave, correct?
So, well, no, what you'd be voting, you're saying for the plan, you're saying, right? So you're giving us locations to ident, for, for bike and pedestrian enhancements, whatever it is, that's all. So we're saying, this is saying, okay, these streets need some pedestrian enhancements.
Take a deeper look.
You have gaps of sidewalks, figure it out. This is saying, okay, let's look at biking, this is where you would want a bike from A to B, this is what we recommend to look at as a, as a potential. But ultimately, I have to look at every single project with, under a different lens, under a microscope, basically. Right? So you're, all you're saying is, yes, we think bike area by Main Street makes sense, or you may say you don't think it does. If, pick one of the other locations, Lowell Street, says on Lowell, let's add bike there, a bike lanes on, on Lowell. I mean, we could go through each one of these, that's what I was saying, if, if you, we want to go through each project, once I get the feedback from the folks that are, what we believe are controversial and the ones that we think are pretty easy and everyone agrees on, we just kind of pull those out and we can go through each project, saying here's what they're recommending, here's what it is, and if you want to provide some feedback or some constraints, you can definitely do all of those things. Or you could say, yeah, just soften this so you're not recommending any type of thing, but what you're gonna, you're looking for bike accommodation on this street, and just go to that level of simplicity, that helps me immensely. That's, that's...
And then we could vote not to have the parking, that we don't want to, to remove the parking between Lowell Street and Church Street, that we can say that.
If you folks just...
But I, I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if we need to vote on that now. I'm fully supportive of that, and I'm fully supportive of voting for that, and I'll vote on it tonight, but is there any harm in waiting until a later time when we come back to revisit this after we get the feedback? I don't think my decision's gonna, my mind will be changed, but...
I would have a response to that potentially.
You probably need to acknowledge, sorry about that.
I just, I, I mean, obviously, I don't agree with the chair on this relative to the timing of this. I think this is good guidance. I think, you know, and we have to remember, where do we start? We started with all parking's gonna be pulled out, and a lot of us were...
Right.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, where'd that come from? Right? I think you would have been able to apply for the grant money for the lost wayfaring signs for, for the Greenway if you, if we had stuck more to the Greenway. So I think this is good guidance. It's not to say that if Bill brought us a project that preserved the parking and made sense, that we would necessarily, you know, reject it outright in the future, but we're, we're giving you some guidance in terms of priorities. we're giving you some guidance in terms of priorities. I've, I've often said it, I don't know why we don't have a sharl going down to Greenwood. You know, I've also often said, you know, it'd be, I, I really want the work done, if we don't have to do as much work on Main, I'd really want the work done when we do start getting that money from CCF for, for the, uh, you know, for the, protecting the lake water and keeping phosphorus out of the lake. Nothing new here, but, you know, I think we're giving guidance. I, I, I don't know, Counselor Dennehy, that we, you know, can't wait and do it again on December 12th. I just wanted to make it clear that, as I did three months ago, I think, to many of the people, people on the council, that, um, you could do a study for a year and a half, but isn't gonna change my opinion of the parking.
Mm-hmm, yep, I'm, I'm hearing that, Crystal, clear. Counselor Dombrowski?
I would just say, this, to me, is, almost sounds like special dispensation because this is a fundamental component to what would appear to be a high priority area that you'd be dealing with. So this notion that we're segregating out this piece and dealing with that separately, I mean, it's been in the public domain, you know, for some time now. We've received considerable feedback. It's probably, it's probably an issue that I've, that I've heard more feedback from than perhaps any other issue, um, since being on the council. And let's, let's just frame it as it is. Like, people, I, I think the majority, I, I know the majority of feedback I've received is people don't wanna eliminate 200 parking spaces. They don't wanna eliminate any parking along that, that stretch for a variety of reasons that, you know, um, I may agree with in their entirety or I, I may question. Everyone has different reasons for why it's important to them when they reached out to me and I respect every one of them. And so I think that, we know that. Like, there's nothing that's gonna change between now and then. So why we're gonna kind of do the dance of, all right, well, next time we'll, we'll just kick the can down, next time we'll then go down. Just know it now. Like, if, 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 if you're looking for direction, which, as I understand, the whole point of this document is, so you guys have direction going forward. If you want direction, I think that there presumably would be at least four of us that can at least provide you that kind of like fundamental, basic direction. Not anti-bikes, but anti-eliminating the parking along that stretch. That's, those are the instructions. If you can make it work, great. If there's some kind of weird nuance that, you know, we have $8 million available to us in a project, we're like, the only thing that's holding us up is this, you come back to the council, we talk about how we, how we problem solve for that, right? But as a general operating, you know, uh, 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 protocol, that is, preserves parking, whatever you can do around that and not eliminate parking, have at it. However you can make it safer, that's great. That benefits everybody. Can you widen the paths so people can run and walk and with, with strollers easier? Great. That's all great, which preserves the parking. So I, I don't think we need to wait any longer. Let's just pass that piece of it because it's such a fundamental component to the, a high priority area, clearly, of, of, of all that you have here, but also just of, of the town generally. I mean, whenever we talk to the lake, it is incredibly sensitive. Everything about the lake is, is sensitive, as we know. You know, right down, we have a bench policy before we can put any kind of structure on, on the, for that very reason, because, because it is such sacred and hallowed ground. So when people got wind of this, then we started to hear about that already, you know, about the parking piece. I get it, I respect it, and it's not an anti-bike thing to say, preserve the parking and figure out, you know, another way that we can make things safer for multimodal transportation. We can do both, but I think we can be clear on, on the preserving the parking tonight. And then, then you have, you know, your marching orders, if you will, at this point, so when you're, the next iteration of this, when it comes back to us, all right, we've kind of settled that issue now. So then you can kind of, you know, be thinking around it. Because I think there is a cost to you guys of the uncertainty of not knowing, you know, ultimately, okay, well, is this going to ultimately be what's, what's voted upon? Thank you.
Counselor Buck?
Uh, so I, I just wanted to take a moment, thank you all for your work on three-plus years, uh, working on this. I, uh, I see this as such an opportunity for us to get more grants and that's where I come from, that we're gonna, um, both you and the team sitting behind you has done such a great job finding us grant money and so we can do some of these projects. And I see us having this finalized plan as something else that you can apply for projects. Um, so I thank you for all your work. I think we almost on a weekly basis get an email from Steve of the money you're bringing in and I see this as part of it. And so I'm really excited about this plan, both as a biker and as a walker, um, and we have some stuff to, to, to iron out. I, I'm not gonna support the motion tonight because I think the way that we came up with this process is you guys came to us with all these changes that people asked you to make. We're gonna put it up on our website, the, the right version up on our website, we're gonna get feedback and you're coming back to us in December. And that's where I think it's appropriate time to do that motion. I think we can hear from residents. I, I wanna say that, um, you know, we each all hear from different residents overwhelmingly. I hear, I have more, I have more communications of people in support of this. They don't know what it means, but they're in support of making it safer for people to walk and bike in our town. I think all of us have that goal. Um, and so I'm not gonna vote in favor because I think it is a conversation. I don't think it's kicking it down the lane. I think it's something that, when we came up with this process, uh, Bill and Erin started with, it's coming back to us in December and that's where we could do a motion like this to make a stronger bike and, um, pedestrian plan that we've all invested. This is not, this is not they that created us, this is us that created us, this. We have all gone to public meetings, we have had conversations with Erin and Bill and their team, we have had these conversations and so I'm really looking forward to having it finalized in December.
Great. Uh, thank you. Uh, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Um, and like I said, I, I agree that we need a bike plan, um, but I do also strongly encourage you all to consult with the fire and police chief because I will continuously ask that question and I really would like them to come to our meeting in December so we can talk to them because the paramount thing here is safety for pedestrians and safety for bicyclists and I want the fire and the police chief, who are subject matter experts, to talk with us about those issues so we can ensure that the final plan maximizes safety.
Counselor Vince, any comments specific to the motion on the table?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything that has not been said? No? Uh, Sherry, I'm gonna ask for your help here. Can you restate the motion for us just before we call for a vote?
Oh, oh my, Jonathan. Um, yeah, not easily, I cannot do that right now, no.
So then the motion, um, and help me out, Counselor McLean. So the motion is, if I'm understanding it, there are four components. Um, one is not eliminating parking along the Main Street corridor from Lowell to Church.
Do we call it preserving all parking along the corridor?
Sure. The softer language that.
Is it preserving all parking or preserving parking? Cause I think those are two different things. Preserving all parking, um, the second component was not moving forward with a dedicated bike lane.
Right.
And then the third was not narrowing the street. Is that correct from the motion perspective?
I thought we were just talking about removing, about preserving parking.
Narrowing the street, I, we do have concerns.
Yeah, I thought that was a comment, not the motion.
I think the motion is just to preserve parking.
Okay, so then the motion is preserving all parking along Main Street and not creating a separate bike lane?
Yes, and to not conduct a multi-season.
Oh, that was it, thank you, sorry. And to not conduct the multi-season. Okay. Sherry, you have that?
And, and to not, and to not what?
Not conduct the multi-season parking study. So just to, again, restate it for the, those of us that now have to vote on it, um, preserving all parking on Main Street between Lowell and Church, uh, not creating a separated bike lane on Lowell and Church, and not conducting a multi-season parking study as, as currently suggested by the draft report.
I, I thought.
From Lowell, on Main, from Lowell to Church.
I thought that we were gonna, I thought that the motion was going to be just preserving the parking because the bike lane, if Bill and his magic can do it, Bill and we can, if that can be achieved by preserving the parking.
So that was not the, that was not the original motion. The original motion didn't include the bike lane. Do we have an amendment to the motion?
Yes, I have an amendment to the motion, that I amend the motion, um, simply say that the, that we would preserve all the parking from Lowell Street to Church Street.
So removing.
Would you be happy, uh, if we just did the two elements that?
Oh, and the no parking study, yeah. Yes, yes. And the no parking study.
Okay, so the motion, so your motion is to amend the motion by removing, uh, the no bike lane?
Mm-hmm.
On, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So as I understand the motion, then the motion is going to be, one, to preserve all parking, uh, along Main Street from Lowell until Church and two, to not, um, conduct a multi-season parking study.
That would be the result of the motion if you approved Counselor Dennehy's amendment?
Right, so that's, right. We're all clear on that? Okay, all right.
Do you need a second on?
Uh, Counselor Dombrowski.
I was just, I was, yes, I was just restating.
Yep.
So mo- motion made, seconded, explained. Probably no more discussion?
Well, any discussion?
This is just on her motion.
So the question is on Counselor Dennehy's motion to amend Counselor McLean's motion to remove the, uh, no bike lane on Main Street between Lowell and Church. Uh, all those in favor of Counselor Dennehy's motion? One, two, three, four, five, we'll say seven zero for the motion. Uh, so the motion carries. So then the amended motion for Counselor McLean, uh, is to eliminate all, uh, parking along Main Street between Lowell and Church and to not conduct the multi-season study.
I think it's.
I'm sorry.
It's getting late.
I know. Okay, preserving all parking.
Counselor Galvin, her hand up already.
Preserving all parking on Main Street between Lowell and Church and not conducting the multi-season study.
Correct.
All right? Everyone clear?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor of Counselor McLean's amended motion? Opposed? All right, motion carries for three. Uh, anything else on the bike and pedestrian plan?
Unfortunately.
Yes?
Sorry, but.
Nope.
Um, I do just wanna say is that I, I do think that there's so much great stuff in here and I do appreciate all of your hard work and I do wanna make sure that people understand that, is that this is a process and is that the specifics will all be voted on as we move forward, once the funding's secured. And once the, once, then you'll come back to a plan that we will vote on. And then, so that that is.
The process, yeah.
That, that, that's the process.
Yeah, and I, I can clarify that in the, in the plan too, just to make sure.
Okay.
In the executive summary, I'll make sure it's in there.
Yeah, and I, and I do think, I, I would say, like, and I was just taking kind of notes of what I think is, would be helpful to people to know, is kind of like the background, what is, what is the background of this project, what's the impetus, where is it coming from, why is it needed? Why do we need the pedestrian and, um, bike plan? Um, the timeframe of what we're, you know, that this isn't gonna happen next year as that this is, you know, a long-term visioning. Um, the goals and objectives of it and maybe the priority projects. Can you prioritize or kind of say in, these are like what we see as the top priorities based on what they said about connecting to schools and connecting to open space?
It is in there.
I, I understand it's in there, but I'm saying just do like a quick PowerPoint, that you just have it.
Yeah.
Do the priorities and then the decision process of how these decisions are made about coming back and being voted on, that no plan is in place until we vote on it. And then funding, like the grant opportunities.
Okay.
I, I just think if you could do something like really short and concise, I'm, I just don't want this to be something that people, um, I want this to be read by as many people as possible and I think that we'll end up with special interests if we just have it or elite, it'll be an elitist kind of bureaucratic document that we wanna make sure we hear from as many people in the community as possible and that they kind of, um, you know, will be able just to be quick, you know, the executive summary and a quick PowerPoint. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, so, but we didn't want every project, right? So just the ones that are what we consider to be controversial that we got comments on, or am I doing all 46?
So I, I think we're talking about two different things. I think for the presentation to the council in December.
Right.
I don't think we wanna spend our council meeting walking through 46 projects. I think there, if there are differences of opinion in the comments you've received from the council and the public that warrant discussion by this council, let's focus on those. I think what Counselor Dennehy is asking is something separate, which is more of a summary that's publicly available.
Okay.
Uh, on the website for people to review. Is that fair?
Yeah, like what are you, what would you say are the top five projects that you, um, would prioritize?
Okay.
So you get a chunk of money and then it's like, what would you do?
Okay.
So, so my request was specific to, for our discussion next time, you know, if there is stuff, I mean, I haven't gotten the sense from any feedback from the public or anyone on the council, for example, that there's a lot of like, you know, strong feelings about, you know, style for crosswalks other than we should have a consistent style. I don't think we need to spend time on that in December unless people have strong feelings about it. Like, let's focus on the things that are more salient and more controversial.
Awesome.
Counselor, I thought you had a comment earlier?
Well, it was just, just to clarify something Counselor Dennehy said, she said, when we get the funding. I think also when you're applying for the funding.
Applying for the funding, yes.
Like, as you come in front of us too, like, that's what you've done before when we've done stuff. So that's where, you know, it's not just when we secure the funding, it's because there's gonna be grants that we apply for once this is finalized and, and to kind of, you know, that's part of the process. You got, just like you've come in front of us before for other items, you'll do that again. So just wanted to clarify that, that it's two, two different times.
Yeah.
Places.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, you have been incredibly patient with us. We've given you a lot of work, but appreciate your time tonight and thank you.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
All right, uh, Mr. Conway and Ms. Waite, item, uh, what are we, 7D, recycling. Thank you for your patience and waiting as long as you have.
So, good evening. Um, I'm Ann Waite, uh, the business manager at DPW. You know Joe Conway, he's the director of DPW. We're here to talk to you a little about recycling tonight, um, and we'll move along quickly as we can.
Ann said she'd make sure she get everybody home before the 11 o'clock goes. So this is, um, basically, I think this is a bunch of questions that go communicated through Mr. Mayo, um, kind of like a tune-up from our perspective, um, a couple updates on things related to some of the questions that the council gave back to us. Ann has a whole bunch of things in this presentation, uh, towards the end that are highlights. Um, and then depending on, on where the conversation goes, we might peek into a little bit of what the future might hold. And when I say future, I'm talking '26, '27. Um, but when we're not measuring interior square footage and rationing that between FTEs, Ann and I are talking about trash and recycling and sustainability at least once a day. So, uh, without further ado, I'm gonna slide into B-chair again. Uh, I feel like that's starting to become my home here and Ann will be driving most of this for us tonight.
So we started with things that are difficult to recycle. Um, so the first one is styrofoam. Um, styrofoam is very difficult, so it's harmful to the environment, it breaks up into small pieces, it blows in, uh, the, the wind, um, its lifespan, they're saying 500 years or longer, they're not even sure. So that's a tough one. To be honest with you, we've tried so many places to try to save that. People are like, oh, go to save that stuff. I have at least five calls in to save that stuff about a municipality, uh, price to drop off styrofoam, been able to get it. Uh, there's a place in Bridgewater called, uh, Insulation Tech, they use styrofoam to, uh, for their building and construction. They're having a difficult time taping big amounts like we had. One of the problems too with styrofoam is it has to be very clean. So some places, like the place in Bridgewater, will only take packing material or block styrofoam. They won't take peanuts, they won't take, um, uh, food trays, they won't take, uh, different kinds of styrofoam. So that makes the delivery of it difficult because it's hard to say to her, bring your styrofoam, but we only want two different types or three different types. So we are always in the look for places, but right now, according to Beyond the Bin, you're just gonna put it in the trash, sadly. Um, next, plastic bags, wraps and packing material. It actually was a topic today on Facebook, uh, whether Shaw's had a place where you could, uh, drop off the bags. They still do. It's as you exit Shaw's, it's on the, uh, right-hand side, there's a box there, they will take your plastic bags. Um, other places, Stop &amp; Shop, uh, Whole Foods will also take the bag. So people need to keep that in mind and when I say bags, they'll also take the wrap that goes around, uh, water, they'll take, um, tissues that, yeah, the tissue that goes around toilet paper, they'll take that. So if people save them, you can drop it into that bin and it will get recycled. Um, as far as the market for us to, to get rid of the plastic bags, uh, we used to have an outlet through Home Depot, they no longer take it. Um, the reason why they won't take the, uh, recycling, um, MRFs won't take the plastic bags is because it jams up the, and you can see a picture of it there, it jams up their machines and it causes a delay, they have to stop and literally cut it with scissors off to try to get it to go. So that's why.
If you can imagine that, that picture, I, I know I've said it here probably a bunch of different times, but, that picture is actually a bunch of wheeled rollers in the process line, um, you know, of the MRF, the, you know, recycling plant, for lack of a better term. And those rollers, of course, you know, bound the bags, now the bags, um, are hooked up on all the wheels and the different things and actually stops, uh, some of the flow[1694.42] And actually stops some of the flow of their stuff, so. I'll get a better picture, and maybe we can get it communicated through Jen, but that is just an example of, you know, something that we've said all the time, that we were actually able to get some, some good picture on, but as you can see, there's basically high resistance to the, the operation moving right there.
Can I just ask, before we leave this slide, when you talk about sort of the plastic wrapping, it looks like in the picture you have like the, the packing bubbles. The, the places that do take plastic bags, do they take that material as well?
You just have to pop it.
Okay. So you take it like a thing of bubble wrap, like if you pop the, okay.
Ann, show us how you pop it again.
Ann gets all the bubble wrap at the Public Works office.
Shredded paper's a tough one, people, it's hard for people to understand. They bring their paper to a shredding event, it gets shredded and taken away, but they can't leave shredded paper out at the curb, and they can't bring it to a shredding event that's not taking shredded paper. One of the reasons is, it also gets stuck in the wheels and, and makes things stop. And it also, when it gets wet, it becomes pulp, and then pulp becomes something they can't take. So, it gets put to the side. So, currently now, there's, shredded paper just goes in the trash sadly. People can not shred it and then bring it to a shredding event, it'll get shredded and then taken away, so it's something to consider.
Ann, is this on our, this one was new to me in the last, I'd say, year, only by my wife drilling down a bit. Is this on our printed material that we hand out to homeowners?
I'm not sure shredded paper is, because that seems to be a newer issue for people, but we'll, we will add it definitely.
We can certainly get this, you know, presentation or something that mimics it, kind of like a FAQ type of thing, and host it on the website for sure.
Right.
It's related to shredded paper, so, we have talked about some options too, if there is a big request. We do a little bit for some of the municipal documents that we generate, we make sure that some certain sensitive things get shredded. There is an option potentially for incorporating that into Household Hazardous Waste Day, and we have in the past, when Caitlippa Garabedian has put together her events related to Sustainability and Earth Day. We've tried to do it there too, we'll try to continue to do that, so people aren't accumulating this stuff as long as they can. But if we find a good avenue for anything that we talk about tonight, we're not afraid to try to implement that and get that rolling too.
Rigid plastic, so there isn't a great way to recycle rigid plastic. Hard for us all, I think, to understand why it can't just be cut up into little pieces and used for stuff. It, there is no market currently for, for, for rigid plastic. So, what happens is, it usually goes to the incinerator. Even when you see some of these events where rigid plastic is, there is no market right now for this. So, we stay on it, we talk to our rep from Republic, probably on a monthly basis, we're always looking for new ideas. We check other people's websites to see if they've found a way, and we talk to our DEP rep. So, if there's a way, we will, we will find it, but sadly, nothing right now. So, we'll talk about the pit a little bit. At the pit now, besides your yard waste, which is very popular, grass, brush, et cetera, you can drop off your light bulbs, mercury, and propane. But since the last couple of years now, cardboard is involved in that, and now metal, and metal has been a huge success. You would be surprised, 21,000 pounds of metal since August has gone through there. So, not only are we making a small amount of money, we're also saving money, because it's not going into the solid waste stream, and it's not going and being incinerated, so it's, it's huge. And people are very interested, we, I was saying to JoJo, said one of the most calls we got today was what they could put in the metal, the metal dumpster. People were all calling with, they had cleaned out this weekend, and they were all looking for, to do some things, so.
So, Ann keeps a lot of this information, and as it comes in, so we update it, we could provide, you know, budgetary comments and things on it. And when she told me how much weight went through the metal can, I, I didn't believe her at first, I thought it was a typo. So we added the net benefit in there, it's small, this is a small longstanding commodity to this, you know, generally, every time we go to recycle this, it's a couple hundred dollar return. One of the things that we don't capture in this, and it's too early to tell, is the effect that that had on residents needing to buy bulk stickers. So if you imagine somebody had a lamp that didn't fit in their blue bin, they may have at one point been buying a $20 sticker to, you know, be able to get rid of that. Well, now they could put their light bulb in the mercury box, and then they could take their metal lamp and throw it in the dumpster, and then the town receives a benefit to that. So, that's just one of the other little, you know, hidden positives in that, I think, to overwhelmingly successful short campaigns so far.
So, going back to cardboard for a second, last year, very popular, we put, moved the cardboard dumpster to Town Hall, let people drop off their boxes, shipping boxes. So, we've increased the dates this year, so it'll be out there from the 18th of December to January 12th. So hopefully get the before and the after of, of the holidays.
One of the things that I probably forgot to mention, that you're trying to get into the next slides information, but the cardboard collection down at Honshur has been so successful, we actually used grant dollars that we'll talk about in a second. We actually have two canisters to collect that, so it's been so highly utilized that one wasn't cutting it, and now, you know, we have the capacity for two, and we're filling it just as much as we were the original one.
So we have been able to get some DEP, RDP grant money over the last couple of years. So, three years ago, we had $500, last year, we had got $15,400, this year, we got $16,900. To let you know what we've done with some of the money, we bought 325 starter bins and bags liners for Black Earth new customers. We had our 301 picked up today. We did the pumpkin pickup, we helped sponsor that with the ESC, that was last Wednesday. I think 500 pumpkins were picked up, and over 2,000 pounds were taken out of either the waste stream, or out of the yard waste, or wherever people throw their pumpkins, which is great. We pay for the annual subscription for Black Earth to go to the food pantry, because they fill their 64-gallon container every week. It's filled to the top, so that's been a great benefit also. And as Jo said, we purchased this, two cardboard containers down to the pit with this money, so that's great. As far as Black Earth, they've been, I think, a great partner. So, I think we currently have about 423 customers now, so it's hard to, to get a gauge on the customers, because a lot of people use the service during the summer, and then stop it in the winter. Either they go away, or they don't have as much, so they don't use it as much, so it's hard to keep track. There, we have a good base, I would say every week, two or three people sign up, we might lose a couple, but we, we gain. The lifetime has been 280 tons, which is crazy, it hasn't even been in that existence that long. That's a lot of, that's a lot of food composting that's been going on. And it takes it out of the incinerator, which is the best part, as we pay close to $100 now a ton to get, to get things incinerated, so, which is great. We have a couple of new things going on, we're going to collect string lights this year. So string lights also damage the machinery, and so they are not wanted in trash, they're not wanted in recycling, they really have no home. So, we are going to collect it at Town Hall from December 4th to January 4th. So if people have old ones, they're just going to be able to come, put it in the bin, and we'll take it away. They don't have to take the bulbs out, they just can't have loose bulbs. So whether they're LED or glass bulbs, we will take either, they just need to leave them in there. So, we've had some, the ESC has asked for this, a couple of people have come to Town Hall and asked for it, so we're going to give it a try this year. And then mattresses, so the mattress program is rolling along. It's, it's gone pretty well, we're averaging about 147 mattresses a quarter. And that's 6,531 pounds, so that's a lot of weight that's coming out of the, of the waste stream. I think Hands Up have done a good job, we haven't had many complaints. If they have a, they've made the pickups on time. We, we've been noticing two pickups a month, there's been so many mattresses going out, so that's a plus. They're very accommodating, when the need comes, and we have more, they're like, we'll pick another date, so that's been good. I think that's about it, Jo, did you have any other things?
No, just to kind of circle it up before we get into any questions or comments, just to learn more, there's a couple of places that anybody who might be watching at home can go. Certainly our webpage, Recycle Smart, excuse me, is basically the go-to for everything. Questioning, recycling, and where you can dispose of something. And then Recycling Simplified is just another avenue you could use. Certainly, if anybody's out there questioning what to do with something, call us. You know, at this point, I don't think there's anything that gets brought up over the telephone or via email that is different or strange at this point, but we're always willing to lend a hand, so. We'll make sure that we link these up too, if they're not already. I believe Recycle Smart should already be, but Recycling Simplified will get hosted, so people have another avenue to figure out a more cost-effective means to get rid of something the right way. And I think with that, if anybody has any comments or questions, I know we, we kind of went quick through it, but.
Well, thank you, that was a really helpful update, and again, learned something new today too. Counselor McLean?
Just a couple of quick questions, Jo, the, I, I was, one time I was overwriting, and they were taking styrofoam. Do you have any familiarity with, I mean, if they got a special trick or something?
I believe they brought it to save that stuff in Shawstown, which we've been trying to
Oh, okay.
work out something with, yes.
Okay. One other question I had is, when we have something like, you know, condominium owner that doesn't get the, maybe they don't do all the pickup there, or just standard paper and plastic. I know some people have said, you know, yeah, I really wish I had a place to take this, instead of giving it to my sister in Melrose. Is that an idea where we could open, you know, something at the pit, so that if, if somebody that owned a condo that didn't have pickup wanted to take it down there, instead of putting it in their garbage? I'm sure a lot of this points up in the garbage.
So, we've kind of taken that approach right now, is with cardboard, and even the metal. If you're bringing yard waste, you know, we ask that somebody has a pit pass, you know, to partake in that part. But because the commodities have been historically good on the other two sides, any resident from town with any of that condo, you know, single home, there's no, there's nobody that we're going to turn away from that. It does get a little tricky from a staffing standpoint, when you start to, you know, expand that out into things like plastics and glass and whatnot. I think right now, we're probably not 100% ready to think about adding two more into it, unless we find an avenue that's advantageous to us. We've had this conversation, I think, a few times, probably with the council, I know definitely with the ESC. You know, we mentioned, you know, for the condo piece to it too, we floated the idea about, you know, whether an appropriate party wanted to sponsor something, maybe through zoning, so when, you know, if you're building a, you know, multi-unit building, you have to have so many parking spaces per, you know, what our regulations are for dimensional, you know, tables and things like that, you know. Does that now become part of this, where that gets into the fold there? It gets a little bit tricky, so our contracts are up in FY '27, or calendar '27. So probably not next year, but towards the end of next year, we'll be coming in well in advance of that to talk about next steps. Last time we went on to RFP for trash recycling, we did explore the option. It got a little murky when you, you now are entertaining customers, or contractors, excuse me, to contract with you to perform those services, but now we're sending, you know, something that they typically grab at the curb. Now, you know, the contractor's now going into private property to service that. There were some questions about the piece in good order by law, you know, generally, they wanted to make sure they were in there extra early to avoid traffics. And now you're talking about, do we modify that now, to bring them into, you know, letting them operate at like 5:00 in the morning? And then there was a liability piece to it too, that we would have had to vet out pretty substantially with Mr. Mullin as far as now inviting the service run by the town, paid for by the town, managed by the town, into a private setting, which it doesn't go into now. We weren't exactly sure how to stop any potential finger pointing related to that.
So, but if there's a condo, large condo complex on Lake Street, they couldn't, they just bring out a number of their bins to the curb?
Uh, no, so the way, the way we have it set up right now is that anything over four units is not serviced. In a perfect world, so right now, Wakefield pays $0 to process and get rid of, for lack of a better term, our recycling. We have a very good contract presently. When that is up to be either renewed, renegotiated, put out to RFP to see what people propose to us, we're going to end up paying a fee for that. We've heard anything from $50 a ton to process that, up to $150. So I think at this point now, we know, you know, the tendencies with what's out there are remarkably consistent. We average between 2,000 and 2,200 tons of recycling a year. I'd probably stay status quo for the moment, knowing that there's some things that are going to change. None of the big vendors that are out there now, by the time we have to have this conversation again, are going to be doing manual collection anymore. Everybody's moving to an automated piece, which will involve a couple of conversations with the council and Public Works, so there'll be a component to that, how we want to structure that. Do we want to, you know, procure the toders and things like that, and own that asset, and operate it like we do trash? Do we not want to, do we want to have the proposers look into something like that? So this, it gets to a pretty tangled web, I think, once you start considering all that into it. Again, you know, to put a positive spin on this, if we find an avenue where we can, you know, encourage those commercial units, those condo units, those people that might not begin to service now, to participate in something, if we could take all of it, great. That'd be even better, but if we could get at least anything more than what we're currently offering, we're certainly not afraid, willing to roll up our sleeves to do it. Currently, at, at the moment, right now, it's kind of, we've exhausted every option that we can that's advantageous to us, and now we're cautiously optimistic on what might be the next one.
Okay, and, and because I've got you here, it's recycling of leaves, I have to make the pitch. Could we, the, the first pickup is so early, right after Halloween, could we do the 18th and then do one in early December? Because if you walk out your uncle's front door and you look up, you'll see my Norway maples laughing, because they've got these green leaves on them, and they aren't coming down by the 18th.
That has always been a tricky balance. November gets a, a little disjointed when you add in the Veterans Day holiday, plus Thanksgiving. Now trash is, with the exception of this year, is delayed two weeks, so, you know, the week of Thanksgiving, you're bumping the trash out onto the Saturday anyway. And then when you flirt.
But early December, you know, it's a more moderate climate now, it doesn't always snow, you know.
The trend is pointing that way, so historically, we haven't flirted with the first week of December because of, you know, the winter, you know, is potentially lurking out there, but we set that up, you know, at sometime in January or February. So as we go through next year, you know, we can set those dates with those contracts, if we can push it out, we will.
A number of people have just asked me to pitch that. It's not just me, it's not just my trees.
It's everybody.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Counselor McVeigh, I would just point out that the, the pit season does get extended when the weather is, is more temperate too, so it goes in.
Last year went into December, actually, I think.
We went to the 10th one.
Yeah, it was late, it was like mid, like mid, almost, yeah, so, another option.
And thank you for your work, advocating for these things.
Every Wednesday, every Saturday, every second of fourth Sunday.
Counselor Buck?
So, thank you for this, I always love, this is one of my favorite things, but all the great work you're doing. Just to piggyback off of what Counselor McLean said, it's going to get more and more people living in apartments and condos, and I think for, including myself, I think for you to advertise of us using the, the tools out there, I'm looking at your website. I, I think to kind of say, I can go to the pit without a pass, right, because I'm not going to buy a pit pass. I think just to highlight that and tell, I know at Wakefield 101, but I think if you almost make a section of people, of this is what you can do. You know, I didn't realize that we had these textile drop-off locations, so I'm always asking people to take my recycled textiles and put them in the orange bags. So the fact that we have these bins, like, I think, you know, just highlighting that a little bit more. And then I loved, and you also noticed on Facebook about the plastic bags, and I think, like, let's tell, like, have that on the website. Because that's where people go and look, they're not going to go look on social media. But that's, you know, here's these local places that you can take plastic bags, so, but great, great work. And then, this is my annual pitch, and Steve probably hates this idea, but I, I visited again my favorite farm, one of my favorite farmers' markets in DC, and they have a huge black, like a composting bucket there for people who all live in apartments, to bring weekly their composting, and then like their Black Earth equivalent takes it off. And I think to have like, something like textiles, but for people composting who, you know, if you live by yourself, like, don't, it's just not worth it to do it, but you'd go drop it off, like something to explore. It worked really well in DC, I feel like we can get it to work here.
Almost functions like a satellite, kind of, like a self-service?
Yeah, yeah, literally people brought Tupperware and like threw it into a big bucket. I mean, it was like, it was amazing, and then they must have just put it on a truck and taken it off, you know, like.
I'm sure there's some, somebody has some infrastructure.
Yeah, so it was just, it was, it was an interesting model, I feel like, and Black Earth is pretty great, I feel like they can figure it out. I mean, we do it at the community garden, right, there's a composting thing there, so people take their vegetables and their plants and put it in there, and they take that out at the end of the season, so, something to think about.
Counselor Danahue?
Well, I just want to say it's a great presentation, it's, it's very helpful. And all the great things that we're doing, it's, it's such a great community service for us. I know that, that cardboard piece gets used in my household a lot, so, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to know, are you going to fix the Christmas lights?
If you make the request, we'll do our best to make it happen.
He's always in his office, he'll always try something. I'm picturing Steve coming by with kind of a Christmas Vacation-style mass of bulbs that he just drops in the bin. All right, well, thank you so much, and, and I have to say, I do appreciate, you know, with some of the, the more difficult to recycle items, the fact that you do continue, you know, looking at opportunities around styrofoam and some of those other areas. Because I, I do think it, you know, we, we see the waste, right, like, we, we, and we'll see it over the next couple of months as we go through the holidays. And so, I, I know there aren't easy solutions to this, but I, I really appreciate that this is something that you guys are continuing to keep an eye on. And I am hopeful that at some point, we'll be able to kind of continue to add more services that residents take advantage of. Certainly the stuff we're doing with compost and scrap metal and cardboard, I think have been really big successes. And I think that's due to the creativity that you guys have shared, and just the initiative that you've taken to get those projects stood up, so thank you for that. All right, thank you. All right, we are. All right, we are now skipping ahead to 14, so we're on the tail end. Any announcement, announcements that folks have? Councilor Smith Galvin?
Just to come to town meeting, um, 8:00 AM Saturday at the Galvin, seven warrants, um, seven articles, I guess, um, including the specialized energy code. And there is, there's a video on the, on Environmental Sustainability Committee's website that tells you, um, pretty briefly and pretty, um, clearly what that means. And I just want to clear up right now, it's, it only applies to new construction.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other announcements? Councilor Nebraska?
I said two things quickly. One, I wanted to, um, invite all seniors to the McCarthy Senior Center on Monday, December 11th for a reindeer games party. I promise it'll be fun. Um, and that's at 1:00 PM on, uh, the 11th of December. So mark your calendars and sign up and advance if you could. Um, and I also wanted to, um, introduce, um, the newest, um, member of the Mayo family. I, I don't know if we have a picture, but, um, George arrived to us serious. George, George arrived a, a month early to the Mayo family back on October 19th, um, weighing in at, at five pounds and 12 ounces. Mom and dad are doing well and grandparents are, are just, just over, overjoyed. So congratulations to you, Steve and Jean and the, and the entire family, of course. He's over right now as a matter of fact, so.
Councilor Buck?
So just to piggyback off of Councilor, um, Smith Galvin, town meeting on Saturday starts at eight o'clock. The council on aging is offering transportation if you need transportation and the Boys and Girls Club, again generously, is offering childcare. So, um, you have backup. And I think, Steve, do we have, will there be breakfast options also?
There will be coffee and muffins, um, starting, I'd say 7:30-ish, maybe 7:15. Uh, Greenwood PTO and they will be giving the proceeds, I believe, to the food pantry, so.
So, um, you will get food, you have childcare and you can get a ride. It's like a perfect Saturday, uh, November morning. And I mentioned, um, earlier, but, uh, just a couple of other announcements, but I did want to thank the council on aging and Karen Burke and her entire staff on a great senior center event that happened last month. It was, they had, um, they had a lot of organizations from outside of Wakefield. So the MBTA came, um, just to talk about how they could help people. It was really great. Gee, as we talked about, Jason was non-stop busy talking to people. So, you know, I love these opportunities and meeting people where they're at and, and getting them to meet other groups that we work with. Um, just a reminder that the Friends of the Lake Breakfast is the Sunday, um, November 19th in the morning, a new location at...
Crystal Community Club.
Crystal Community Club on Sunday morning. And then just to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, although we are meeting before Thanksgiving. Oh, no, that's actually the week after. Thanksgiving's late this year.
We'll need a town meeting, but yes, we're meeting after.
Sorry, Councilor McLean?
Just a quick congratulations to Councilor Commander Robert Vincent, who was the keynote speaker at the Veterans Day ceremonies at the Galvin Middle School. And thank you for your service. Um, we, uh, I would also just quickly report again that we did have juries run for all ages last weekend around Lake Quanapaw. It's the signature, one of the signature runs for the New England 65-plus running club. Um, and we had 270 participants running and walking from ages in the high 80s to under 10. Um, and that particular race does raise fairly significant funds for FOLQ as well as the Wakefield Educational Foundation.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other announcements? I have, uh, a few congratulations to share, though, though certainly not to, to outdo Mr. Mayo and his piece, but we, um, you know, we're, we're kind of hitting the end of the fall sports season and, you know, there, there's a saying at the high school that it's a great day to be a warrior. And if you look at actually the last few weeks, it's been like a great several weeks to be a warrior. So in no particular order, I did want to recognize, uh, first of all, our Wakefield marching band, uh, for being the NESBA Division Five Champions. Uh, they won a platinum medal in five caption awards, which is really outstanding. I mean, that basically means in all five areas that they get judged, they were, uh, the best, which we know, but now everyone else recognizes as well. So congratulations to them. Uh, girls swimming came in third place at states, uh, incredible outcome, great job by them.